I think everybody's at home watching New Hampshire election results about now. It'll be interesting. Okay. Yes, first thing we have up is the dog hearing for a dog located at 88 Crooked Ledge Road. We'll now open the dog hearing for 88 Crooked Ledge Road. The hearing's being conducted under Mass. General law, chapter 140. The complaint is as follows. This is from Daniel Pellegrini at 76 Crooked Ledge Road. Found dogs attacking and killing a fisher cat on my property. Also witnessed these dogs chasing deer on my property on multiple occasions. These dogs have been repeatedly seen on my property. Several attempts to rectify the problem with the owner have been made with no success. And the dog's owner's name is Brian Heckworth, 88 Crooked Ledge Road. Okay, is there any... Well, will all the parties to this complaint please rise and raise your right hand? Is anybody here? Mr. Heckworth?
Pellegrini.
Pellegrini, okay. Anybody else representing Mr. Heckworth? Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that all influence statements are the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Now, is there any witnesses that wish to testify? Would you like...
I mean, I've got the right up there. I've actually got pictures of the dead fisher cat. I bought the land to hunt on it and hunt on it very heavily. And these dogs consistently are out there chasing deer. I've called the police probably four or five times. I've called Brian, I don't know, 10 or 15 times over the past five years, and he always has an excuse. And as you can see by his attitude of not showing up today, he doesn't take it serious.
So this is vacant land? It's not where your house is?
Not vacant. My house is on it.
Your house is actually on that land?
But it's 400 acres. And when I say I see these dogs in the back, they're two miles in the back chasing deer behind his house. So it's not just off the house. He opens the back door and lets them run free with no regard to any of his neighbors.
Now, is that adjacent property, his property to yours?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. And like I said, I've addressed it multiple times with him and his attitude as well. Someone left the door open. Well, someone did this. Well, someone did that. And this is an ongoing five to six-year problem.
Okay.
And there's nothing worse than sitting in your tree stand for four or five hours waiting for a deer and then to have two dogs running the deer right by your property. I own two dogs. I love dogs, but I keep them in control and I never see them out there. All my neighbors have dogs and I never see any other dog on the property except for his.
And so he's never asked permission to let the dogs roam loose? Okay. And I think we don't want to see the picture of the cat. I don't know if anybody wants to see it, but I'm glad...
But it's pretty disappointing when you see that and you come up to the dogs and they're all over it and the only way to get them off is to fire shots in the air.
Dogs are lab mix and another mix?
Yeah. One's got a little longer hair and one looks like a black lab.
Okay.
And they just run deer all day long.
Okay. I read something, Heather, that the dogs were not licensed as of this...
Go back to the report section. Turn. Handwriting.
A dog not licensed as of 2/4/16.
Yeah. I mean, the first time I went to Brian's house was probably four and a half years ago when I saw snowshoe tracks up on through the land and I asked him what was going on and he said he was looking for his dogs out in my land.
Yeah.
And I asked him to keep his dogs off the property and if he would keep off the property during hunting season.
Out of curiosity, does he have a lot of land with his house? So it's a regular lot?
Two acres, three acres, something in that neighborhood.
Okay. Anything else you want to say on that?
No, just that I've tried multiple times to rectify it and there's a lot of time and investment into the sport of deer hunting. I know a lot of people don't condone it, but it is...
It's your property.
It's my property. It's my right.
It's legal.
And in certain states, you can actually shoot the dogs if they're chasing deer.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody on the board?
I just have a question.
Yes, my face to mine.
I have a question. You said fisher cat.
Fisher.
Okay, so it says, it says...
My wife wrote it. My right. Wife has better handwriting, so she misspelled it, but it's a fisher cat. They're black. They're up this law.
Right, right. I've never seen them, but I've heard they're vicious, but...
Want to see a picture?
It's a dead maul cat.
I know.
It's not mauled up, but it's laying there.
Okay, so that was my question because I, you know, never...
So a fisher cat is a wild... I'm thinking more of a...
It's not a domestic cat. It is a, it's a wild animal and yes, they are vicious, but that just proves to you what the attitude of these dogs are, if they can take that down. And I know it was definitely them because they were over it and they were eating on it.
Fishers will attack on humans. They feel threatened.
Yeah.
Wow. Ooh, he's dead.
Yeah, he's inside one. He had puncture wounds all on his back, but the two dogs were over.
Wow, thank you.
Are you talking about coyotes or coyotes?
No, I'm talking about domestic, neighborhood, both.
Okay.
And they were all over that cat when I came up to it and they started looking at me and I had to fire, I had a pistol in my hand because I carry one all the time. And I had to fire some shots into the ground and then they took off right to Brian's house.
Okay.
And then I called him and...
You get any sense that they would attack you if...
I didn't feel threatened, but I don't feel threatened by a black bear. I mean...
Okay.
He's got a gun.
Exactly. I had a gun. If I didn't have a gun and I had my little daughters with me, sure, maybe would've. But I'm not here saying that they're dangerous from that aspect, but they find spore in tracking wild animals and putting them down. And you could tell they're not... And that's the difference between coyotes and domestic dogs. Domestic dogs are well-fed. They don't eat when they kill them. Coyotes aren't well-fed and they have a harder time keeping up with animals.
Okay.
So that's why they're so detrimental to the wildlife.
It's my understanding that the town sent a certified letter and a regular letter to the owner of these animals.
Yeah, there is a prior complaint of 9/26/15.
Well, put that on aside for a second. The notice was sent to them, both certified and regular mail. The certified came back unclaimed. The regular mail did not come back. So that's implying that he has been notified of this hearing.
Right.
The other issue is the animal does, or both animals have no licenses, which is a violation of the town regulations.
So let's finish this. Is there anybody else that wants to comment? Okay, so we're going to close the hearing and now we get to decide what we want to do here. So go ahead, Charlie, sorry.
Well, we have two dogs running at large. They're violating the lease law as well as the fact that they're not licensed. I think we should move to have the police department be instructed to take and cite them with the violations.
Jackie?
Yeah.
We'll need a motion then.
I move that we instruct the police department to cite them on the two separate sections relative to dogs running at large and not being licensed.
Second?
Second.
Okay. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's what we'll do and we'll see where it goes. Let us know.
So what would you like me to do if I see them out there? Note the Times?
Note the Times and call the police department once they know...
Make a report with the police department so there's a blotter entry, so there's a paper trace that we can follow in case this escalates.
And we'll follow...
Ask me to come to you.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
That's the proper procedure. Now we're, once we have the police do it, we can follow up.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yes, I love dogs, but...
Oh, yeah. We hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay. Todd Bard. Am I not seeing him here? Is he supposed to show up, Heather? Todd Bard?
I did text him a little while ago. Haven't heard back. It was my understanding he was coming tonight, but sometimes he's running a little bit late.
Okay, so let's pass over that. And next we have the town administrator's report. Ready for that?
Oh, no.
Or not?
Hold on. Long wait.
Wasn't that good, George?
It's for you. All right, so we've been very busy in the town administrator's office with budgeting, the annual town report, community compact cabinets, purchase procurement, working with the state, setting up the signing on Thursday. There have been numerous constituent concerns over the past couple of weeks. We've had several insurance claims. The signing for the community compact cabinet for the best practices is scheduled for this Thursday at 3:15 at the North Hampton Town Hall. We'll be signing there with the lieutenant governor and other communities as well. I believe Charlie's able to go. I think Liz was planning to, if she's feeling well. And if anyone else on the board's able to attend, it's a great opportunity to meet with the lieutenant governor and sign the community compact into play. At this time, we've actually gone out to procurement for all three of the pieces. I'll be consulting with John later on a couple of the projects to make sure we have everything in line. I've already talked to the state, actually based on our timeline for getting these best practices. As a reminder, they are to do an operational and organizational study of the fire and EMS services for the town. They also include doing an organizational chart, wage and classification chart, and let's see, job scoring template. And the last one is to look at the governmental structure and draft a charter for the town that they would recommend along with procedure and steps from there should the town wish to move forward. Other things, the annual town report is underway. We're still getting our annual town reports from various departments. We're working with the school department to see if we can have students in the art class design covers for our page, which will be an interesting start and hopefully a nice tradition moving forward. As far as budgeting goes, we've been meeting the finance team, finance committee. We've had a few missed meetings due to either things not being in from other departments or from having bad weather or just being overwhelmed in all the departments and folks unavailable to meet. The cherry sheets are out, so we do have the revenue projected from the state. Mind you, they can change at any time. The net school spending numbers are also out. We're waiting from the school at this point to give us a prediction of how we need to break it down as we did last year and what our minimum contribution is going to be. Vicky will hopefully address a little bit later this evening how our chapter 70 end of the year report put us in underneath net school spending. I believe it was by .49%.
Yeah.
And as a result, we have a carryover amount that we have to make up for in FY16. I believe it amounts to 25,000, plus or minus a little bit, which we're going to have to figure out how to resolve. I'm hoping to have a preliminary report for the board of selectmen next week on where our revenue numbers stand as compared to last year and compared to expenses. This is just going to look at the big picture. So we'll have the cherry sheet numbers. We'll be looking at what we're looking to pull in for departmental revenue, taxes, and then looking at the other side, what's staying in from indirect costs and also what the increase is going to be for our contribution for both Norris and also the Hampshire Regional. My understanding is overall Hampshire Regional went up 2.9% on their budget. That doesn't necessarily mean that our contribution's going to go up 2.9%, but we are waiting for a figure from their office. On another note, Randall has asked that for a future meeting, the board of selectmen take up the issue of considering having a mailbox policy. There's been a lot of concern lately about hitting mailboxes or mailboxes being taken out more so from the throw of snow. Residents, constituents, sometimes they're concerned that the snow isn't heavy enough to take the mailbox out. We've had a lot of really heavy snowfalls. They haven't been a large amount, but the snow itself has been heavy. Friday is an example, is very wet, very thick snow, so that can really pack a punch. So he would like the board to consider looking at that moving forward.
Have we taken out a lot of mailboxes this year?
Yes.
Yes?
My office has been very busy with insurance claims, John.
Really?
You say mailbox, Felder cries.
Well, it's just such a light winter, you know. Mine's never been hit much when I go home tonight.
The storm, I think it was two weeks ago or three weeks ago, whichever one it was, we actually took out, I think, about seven in a row...
Really?
...on the same street, so...
Are we tracking the truck driver for all these mailboxes?
Well, I think what happens is a lot of it, Charlie, you speak truck more than I do, comes out of the side.
The velocity off the plow is basically the weight hits the boxes and there it goes. There's two issues. There's boxes that are put up that are put up in the summertime that nobody's anticipating this impact of weight. So there's that other side of the argument. And there's the old thing about the fact that posts do rot.
Yeah, Randall brought in a post a couple of meetings ago and actually showed the one that broke down. It was rotted through the middle. Yeah.
Any other questions for me?
No.
Okay, thanks.
The community compact date and time again, when was that signing?
It's on Thursday at 3:15 at North Hampton City Hall.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So we don't have Todd yet and we're a little early for Vicky. Do you know if Vicky's in the building?
She said she'd be here around 6:30.
You want the liaison reports? I guess we're going to have to. We're going to skip Vicky's report and go to the select board updates, liaison reports. So any board reports?
No, not many.
Charlie?
Highway Department, East Street Bridge. We wrote a letter a month ago to DOT asking them to start looking at repairing the, well, basically do the designs and everything. Major pothole developed in the middle of the bridge last week. I sent that over to Senator Humison and underlined the fact that we've got to start really looking at East Street and that bridge because things are starting to show more and more. Not that this is going to move this up in the timeline very much. Another thing we were doing is we're meeting with people on the sidewalks for smart growth. Heather, probably can talk a little bit about too, but one of the things we're doing is getting waivers on the temporary easements to take and build these sidewalks this summer. And it's been brought to my attention by a number of property owners around Palmer Meadow Road and Route 10, the need for a traffic signal there. And I have the property owners asking me about this. So they're the ones that live there, work there. They're seeing the congestion problem there. I'm asking the board, would the board want to take and put this on their agenda in the next meeting or the meeting after to let the general public come in and tell us what they think? Because if we see that we should be going in that direction, then this board should be sending a letter to DOT asking them to do an evaluation at intersection.
And do it at the same time as the sidewalks and everything?
Never happen.
If we had our druthers though.
I'm just being honest about it.
I understand. Jackie? Oops, sorry.
So I just, I just had an update on that, Charlie, on East Street Bridge. About an hour ago, I got an email that they are talking about where this is on the tip and it's going to be put on the agenda in March. And we actually have to show up to make sure it has representation and they need an update of the changes or they will not consider re-scoring it. They don't have a date yet.
When you have a date.
Aye, aye. And on the safe routes to school piece, John, that Charlie, I think, recommended about or said something about smart economic growth?
Yeah, I know.
So that's, that's a safe routes to school project. That's what we've been working on. We have about 10 of Butters. We've met with a good portion of them at this moment or have been in correspondence with those who we have not met with. We've had most of the, or all of the properties at this point that owners we've met with actually do certificates of donations for the temporary construction easements, which is very nice to see. And most folks have been in support of it. They've had some concerns about, you know, shoveling the sidewalk or concerns of liability, people's safety if it's not graded at the proper angle, concerns with what's placed on their property and the like. But I think we've worked pretty well with Mass. DOT to overcome any of those concerns.
Hopefully they're recognizing that's going to help everybody in the area. Jackie? Charlie wanted to set up a time in the next meeting or to discuss the bridge or the light, rather.
Traffic light.
Traffic light, yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't know.
Sounds great.
Okay. Heather, can we do that next meeting or so?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Liaison report. I'm on the Greenway negotiating committee. Can't say much other than we're progressing and as soon as I have information we can release, I will, but it's going, it's going in a positive direction, I guess is the best way to put it. One other thing I want to bring up, capital improvement committee. We disbanded that because of the vote last year. I want to at some point put that back on the agenda so we can talk about it.
Did not disband. I think you're...
A few years behind us.
I've been well. We already had a meeting.
And that capital improvement committee, I've...
Oh, the public safety?
Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Ah.
If Charlie can use the wrong name, I thought I could get away with it too.
You did it too.
Public Safety Committee. I think that's an issue we need to take up and bring forth again in one form or the other. So if we can put that on the agenda to discuss too, unless somebody has any issues with that?
No, I think we've got to do something with it.
Okay, yeah, definitely. Okay, Vicky's not here. Todd's not here.
Open time for public?
Yeah. Vicky, Vicky, yeah, we're down to three, open time for the public. I hate to say it this way, but I hope there's somebody here who wants to talk about things to keep us going for a little bit. Yes, sir.
Heather, am I supposed to speak now or are you...
I would probably wait until Vicky can address everyone with the bussing piece first if anyone in the audience has questions on that because she's going to be able to address them at the same time.
How are you?
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street, speaking as town moderator. I want to give a report on the special town meeting we had. The town accountant, Janine Domina, finished the minutes and published them in a timely manner. We had a very successful meeting. Procedures work well. Had a lot of feedback that was well over the top by years and years. Never received so much positive feedback. Democracy in action. Probably less discussion, less intensity at an annual because there's so much more to cover, but in the time we were able to do it all in one evening with time to spare. The annual meeting, any questions on the special?
Just curiosity, any comments back on having the television coverage there?
Television, I noticed they broke the agreement. They didn't stay where they were. I think when they were leaving, they walked into the audience and kind of panned. I noticed that, but it worked well. They, and everybody was fine with that. And Channel 191 was excellent, their coverage.
Good. Thank you.
The annual, I was looking through some of my notes, quite stack of them, and years ago, we would have a 45-day deadline imposed by the select board for articles to be submitted for the warrant for the annual town meeting. We don't do that anymore. And I believe that encourages departments and individuals to wait until the last minute and then it's, can be chaotic trying to digest everything, vote on it and get it, get it posted. So addressing the select board, would you consider establishing some type of a deadline to have everyone submit the proposed articles for the annual town meeting?
I mean, personally, I think some deadline makes sense, so I'm okay with putting it on an agenda to discuss.
Yeah.
Okay. So Heather, can you put that on an agenda? Thanks. Okay, so next agenda, hopefully it'll be right on there if you want to come in.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I like that. Thanks.
May Jordan's ready.
Yes, sir. Come on.
George Rankort, 82 White Loaf Road. I don't know if you're aware of it and I know, I shouldn't say it that way. I know you're aware of it, but as of March 1st, we have a new regulation, smoking and or not smoking in this town is going to be 21 years of age.
Right.
Right? I don't remember voting for this. I don't remember it being on the ballot.
It was the health board...
We got another regulation. The state is 21 years of age. All right? I don't remember seeing or hearing any, our kids chewing tobacco, smoking.
So are you saying you're not for it? Is that...
Of course I'm not for it. It's just another GD regulation.
But that was by the...
I don't smoke, don't get me wrong. I don't smoke and I don't chew tobacco.
I can explain how this is set up, but it's not a valid issue, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The legal age is 18. People walk into the stores and apparently Amherst, North Hampton, East Hampton, now Southampton, you can't buy tobacco.
Unless you're 21.
Which is all great.
Yeah.
When it's still 18 in the state, now we're making it 21 in Southampton.
Yeah.
Also cutting our throat. There's a lot of tax money, cigarettes, tobacco.
I think...
How many people, I don't know how many people walk in and buy chewing tobacco.
Yeah.
I'm not one of them.
But the health...
But that's beside the point. It's another wasted regulation.
Let me answer you. Yeah, okay.
It's another regulation.
Yeah.
What's next?
George, I don't disagree with that.
Kids can only have six...
The health board had a hearing.
George, I have the deepest respect for you. You know that. We go back and forth all the time.
Yeah, that's beside the point.
The problem is you're voicing this to the wrong board.
Well, I re...
Let me explain. Let me explain first. The Board of Health is elected as an autonomous board. Under state statutes, they have the authority to set up these regulations and that's what they did. We as the Board of Selectmen have no jurisdiction over them to negate anything like that. Doesn't matter if we agree or disagree, we have no authority to do that.
I've already made myself, I already said something to the health department about it, right? It's a wasted regulation.
But they're the ones that establish... I mean, it's like, we have no control over that.
Well, we should have some control over it. Should have something to say about it before, you know, before this shows up.
They had a public hearing. They had, they had a public hearing on this, so they...
Yeah, they should've.
They did. Did you go to that though?
No, I didn't even hear about it.
It was advertised in the paper.
It was publicized, yeah.
But, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we never, that we miss.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I've never smoked in my life, so here I am.
I understand, you're just...
I've never chewed a tobacco.
You're just doing tobacco. I got it, yeah.
Never smoked a cigar.
I know.
I take it back, one, right? That was on my face.
That wasn't the thing to do, right?
But that's beside the point. Just another blank regulation over and over and over. Next thing you're going to be saying, Jesus, we can't buy 16-ounce cokes.
I heard that happen in New York.
I heard that happen in New York.
Yeah, I've heard that too, right? Or, gee, the little kid buying two candy bars.
I think that's a whole nother issue, so we don't want to.
Oh, yeah, I know it's a whole nother issue. That's beside the point.
Your point is taken. We understand. But.
Yeah, the Health Board went through the process.
I've already, you know, I've already voiced my, you know, what I thought about it to the Board of Health, and he said, good luck. And it's too bad. There's also a tax, and we're talking taxes. A lot of taxes are paid on tobacco. Right?
I mean, I wasn't there, but I don't know if local vendors showed up at that meeting or not.
I didn't, I didn't even know about it. You know, I missed it somewhere, but.
That was the place to voice those concerns.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, as always. Anybody else, public time? Let's close out and Todd, I see you're in the audience. How are you? We're going to go back to 1B. Todd Bard, review of solar net metering credit opportunity. Todd's been here in the past, and he's going to give us an update now, see if we have any other questions. You want to maybe quickly summarize the project again for people that are listening?
Sure, absolutely. So it's a solar project. It's approximately six megawatts, which is about thirty acres of solar up in Deerfield, Mass. On a rock quarry considered a brownfield site. They have all the permits now in place, the pilot land lease contract. The existing and signed contracts of the offtakers now are Deerfield, Gateway, City of East Hampton. The Town of Longmeadow just approved it, the school committee, to take 1.4 million kilowatt hours. Amherst Pelham Regional has signed their contract. And so the two remaining potential contracts would be Hampshire Regional and then yourself, the Town of Southampton. And the remaining is about 1.5 million. I actually emailed back and forth with Craig Jurgensen from Hampshire. They're still contemplating maybe doing an onsite solar, so hopefully I can have a conversation with him to see how that might impact his usage of net metering credits or what they're, what they're willing to do.
I guess question with the energy prices going down, keep going down. We had a floor on this. What was it, eight cents?
Seven and a half cents.
Kilowatt hour. So with all the energy costs going down in general, will we hit the floor and leave room underneath it if we weren't in this agreement?
So current, the current net metering tariff rate right now is eleven point one cents. So you got a little under four cents to play with, and that's using the current low energy rates that we have today. So there is a big gap. Could it fall to, you know, something around seven and a half cents? Sure. That's why I tried to get that floor as low as possible. And it's one of the lowest floors I've gotten in the marketplace.
Is that floor firm right now, or can you go back and negotiate? Okay, so it is what it is right now?
Yeah, it is what it is, yeah. In fact, the City of Pittsfield was offered 4.4 million kilowatt hours, so it's probably three and a half megawatts. Twelve and a half percent discount, eight and a quarter floor.
Eight and a quarter?
And so they, they actually want this project. So if you don't come on in Hampshire Regional, they're going to take the one and a half million kilowatt hours.
And we can select where we want this power to go in our town.
Yeah, you can choose any account.
Whatever meter is five meter, right?
Any meter, yep. And you can transfer those credits twice a year, so we can transfer them. If one account gets too many credits, we can transfer them to another account.
I guess my only personal concern is it's a twenty-year commitment.
Yeah, no, I have the same concerns as you. So I sell three and four-year contracts, and I don't know what energy's going to do tomorrow, and I'm in the business. So twenty years is a long time.
What do you folks think? We have to figure out how we want to proceed here. If we take a vote, I'd like to get other members of the board at the, at the vote. I'm sorry, I don't know who set this up, where I'm sitting up here and they're back here. It's kind of hard to talk.
Yeah, I.
Excuse us.
That's okay.
I think we should, I think we should talk to the other towns first before we.
Well, we have talked to some other towns.
Right.
Just a matter of.
I'd like to see more information. I think twenty years is a long.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Twenty years is a big, a big commitment.
I have long pants and shoes on, so it's okay.
John, I think twenty years is a major commitment, and I'm a little apprehensive about that.
You know, it's a fair question. I mean, every city and town has signed a twenty-year contract. My competitors and all, I have not done a state college, a city, town, school, district, less than twenty years.
Because the way technology advances so quickly, I mean, we could be locking ourselves into something that could be so much less expensive in the very near future, right?
With, with solar, no. I mean, the efficiencies haven't gotten that high compared to what they were years ago. So that's, that's something that hasn't really changed. It's gone up incrementally. So the wattage has gotten a little bit more efficient. But there's, there's been no aha moment where they've really kind of broke the code and said, okay, now we can produce 600 watts in the same size that we used to produce 300 watts. And it hasn't changed in, they've changed like drastically in forty years. It's become efficient, but not super efficient.
Are they working on it? I mean, in forty years, really? That's a long time.
Well, everybody's, everybody's trying to, everybody's trying to do better with wind, solar, biomass, geothermal. And the, the nice part is, is these credits stay on to your accounting bills from WMECO or EverSource now, in perpetuity. So if you buy the credit now, you can keep them for twenty, twenty-five years. Now, it's not a good use of money to buy them today, and you can't use them. But, and we can transfer them to other municipal offtakers, because there's a lot of municipal offtakers that don't have credits. And so we can transfer them. So if you don't need them.
Can you sell credits, sir?
Yeah, you can resell them.
Okay.
You can arbitrage them.
I, I think we should move forward with this, but I think we need a better, a fuller board to do this.
Yeah, I agree.
So can you move this to a, our next meeting?
We can put it on next week's agenda for a final vote.
Next week, this week after.
Sorry, next agenda, yeah. Next agenda for a final vote. Heather? Okay, cool. So we'll put it on next agenda for a final vote. Do you have a comment? Sure.
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway, also Hampshire Regional School Committee. By any chance, has the Board of Selectmen talked with Craig Jurgensen or anyone from the school committee? Because we've had Todd come and present to us several times. I'm just wondering, have you guys talked with him? Because I know, I don't know if you have.
Well, Liz.
Get our ducks in a row here.
Liz usually coordinates with the school department, so I.
Yes, I've spoken to Craig several times, and we've actually had Todd present to this board three, four times now, Todd.
Yes, and he's presented to us about the same.
So he's done a great job presenting, and he's nice and keeps coming back for us, so.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering if we should all be talking together instead of dragging him up again and again and again.
Is there an inclination from Hampshire Regional to go either way, just for FY?
Well, I think Tammy just represented Hampshire Regional since she's on the school committee for Hampshire Regional. And they are moving forward, and Todd, I believe, has already signed with Hampshire Regional.
No, so Hampshire's not. They, they, we proposed maybe doing the small onsite solar project and then doing net metering credits. The great thing with credits is you don't have to wait to do, like, we talked about your landfill in the past, is you can take credits and still do other future solar projects, and then we can transfer those credits. We can arbitrage them. Where, if you have onsite solar, you have to take the power. If power goes down and you're locked into a fixed price, you have to pay that price for the full twenty years. And so that's, that's the piece that a lot of people don't understand. That's why net metering credits are really more beneficial, because you can transfer those to everybody. And the way we structured this contract is it's percentage discount. It's not a fixed price. And that's, I like them for cities and towns. In the Town of Brimfield, I just had a meeting with them, the Board of Selectmen this morning, and it was the same thing. We got a floating discount. And that one, I was able to get no floor. The developer was willing to give that up. And so they cannot lose any money on that, on their twenty-year contract.
Okay.
This developer won't, won't do a no floor. I asked him, he won't do it.
He won't do it? I'm sorry. How about if we invite the school committee or representatives for our next meeting, so if they want to have any input on this?
Does that make sense, Tammy?
It would.
Okay, let's do that. That way, I mean, we don't have to do it together, but it'd be nice to compliment whatever we're doing.
And if there's a subcommittee, because the only thing I worry is, is this needs to be expedited, because they're really ready to, to develop that project.
We got it on the agenda, next agenda, which is two weeks away for a final decision.
Okay, that's fine. I, I thought it was like a month. I'm sorry.
No, two weeks.
And I can be available for subcommittees or to meet and walk through anything, you know. I really want you guys to get this.
We need to make a final decision on this.
As long as, as long as you understand all of it, that's, I just want that, that's all.
Well, again, it's two weeks from now. Heather can give you the exact date and time and if you're available?
Yeah, no, I'd be more than happy to come back out.
Make it an even five or six times or whatever.
That's all right.
You're on a first-name basis, so you're welcome.
That's good. It's always, it's always good to have good relationships.
Is there any more questions for Todd? Thanks, we appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Vicki's here. Okay.
Yay.
Okay. Chapter seventy, fiscal year sixteen. We've received notification from the Department of Secondary Education that we are below net school spending from our fiscal year fifteen year-end report. Vicki, I understand you're going to come up here and explain a little bit to us.
[laughing]
We're, we're about $25,000, I guess, under, which is point oh oh four nine percent. And from reading it, I'm just remembering it, that rolled over from last fiscal year about the same amount. Is that correct? About twenty-four, twenty-five thousand? So it's the same amount that, that rolled over from the last time. And because we're below net school spending doesn't mean we're in violation of the law, because we can go maximum of five percent below. This is point oh oh four nine. But still, we want to meet the obligation if possible. And you can tell us what will happen if we don't meet the obligation and continue rolling it.
So it looks as if, by talking to the school department, Bobby Jones, and looking at these numbers, it looks as if we originally set our budget in fifteen, and we were already short by the Department of Education information that we got. So it was short 25,939, according to their calculations. That was the actual, but our, we spent pretty much the actual that we budgeted, so it makes me believe that the budget was short to begin with. Because our actual pretty much came in on target to what our budget was. So what they do is they, the Department of Education rolls it over into FY sixteen, and they add that to our net school spending for sixteen, which we would need to meet by the end of the year. There's penalties, interest, there's a potential of not receiving our local aid if we don't comply. And so in looking at the numbers for sixteen, the town had allocated $24,000 for the school's new phone system, because their phone system, they couldn't dial 911 from their classrooms. So it's a little antiquated. That money can count towards net school spending. So if you take the 24,000 that we allocated after we already did the budget, which we did as a capital project, which wasn't included in our school budget line, you know, you're left with about $2,000 worth of money that we would have to come up with. Any monies that's in vocation tuition that we don't spend, we would need to transfer that to the school, because that's included in our net school spending. We can't just say, oh, well, we're not going to spend the vocation tuition, because that's included in the whole piece. If we budget that piece and we don't spend it, we're going to be short again. So we would need to transfer the rest of whatever we don't use at the end of the year, which I think, I don't have that paper with me. It was like $12,000.
That was about fifty.
No, we transferred the thirty. And by the calculations of, we are paying Smith-Vogue and the sped piece of it, and Westfield-Vogue, it's about twelve or between twelve and thirteen thousand dollars. That we would, at the end of the year, have to, or as soon as we could, at the end of April, transfer to the school, so they have out a, a good chunk of time to be able to spend that on something. You know, we can speak to Eliza, and maybe she has a project that she can use that money for, but we would have to transfer that to that piece. Now, if you look at net school spending for seventeen, I'm going to work with Bobby a little bit closer. We kind of took, I kind of took a preliminary stab at it and, you know, came up with a, you know, guess at it, so to speak, right now for seventeen. So her and I will work on that to make sure that we're, we're good. Part of what, part of what becomes kind of tricky is estimating any of the administrative indirect costs that doesn't necessarily get charged directly to the school. Those pieces would be like administration, which is a fixed formula. The state sets the administration per rate pupil, and they have that rate already set. And then you take how many pupils are in the students in the school, and you multiply them, and you come up with that average. So that's pretty much set. You know, the pieces that are more variable are maintenance, which would be any plowing, or sanding, or mowing that Randall does. And last winter, we had a huge chunk of, big winter. This year, we might not have as much. So that might decrease, which means, you know, we would have to give more money in our budget physically in order to make up some of that money, because that all plays into pieces.
If the reallocated costs are less than last year, we've got to add more money to the school budget.
Correct, to come up with that.
Do they have to spend it by the end of the school year?
Yes. Yep.
Which.
Just, just a question, Vicki. If we had to, can we make it into a capital project? So would it be possible to take the funds from the Smith-Vocation line at the end of the year and say, we need to do two, come May, we need to do two projects, replace doorways, and start replacing some of the sidewalk? So as long as we kept the projects under the requirements, so we just did small pieces. So instead of having one project go higher than 5K and theoretically fall under the capital improvement piece, do small fixes, at least be able to, A, cover ourselves with transferring the funds, B, fix some major issues that they're having, and C, be able to move forward without them having $12,000 at the end of the year and going, where am I supposed to put this?
Well, well, that's what I just said. We, we need to talk with Eliza to see if there's anything of that type of nature that she could. But we can't transfer it until that April 30th date unless you go back to town meeting, which I don't think we want to do that again. So at that last date, you know, between April 30th and July 15th, you know, it's by law, the Select Board and the Finance Committee, as long as they approve that transfer, then, you know, they're good to go. So, yes.
What about the money we transferred at the special town meeting for their colas? Does that count anything?
That came from Smith-Vogue already. That $30,000 came from this, from the vocation tuition.
We just moved it?
Yep. Yep. I had to think about where it came from, but yeah.
So you're saying, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Twenty-six thousand roughly, but we already spent 24 on the phone system, so we only need 2,000. And then we have to reallocate it, the reallocated costs, we've got to figure out those.
Yes.
And so if it's going to be a push at the end of the year, sounds like what Heather's saying and what you just said would make sense to find the project. Yeah. Hold on. Do you want to say anything else before, recognize?
Sharon Powell.
You have to go up there. Thanks, Vicki.
Sharon Powell Wojcik, School Committee. I'm sorry, I'm literally hard of hearing, and you just spoke so fast, I couldn't hear you. So are you, what you, we had the 25,000, I think it was 25,389.
Twenty-six thousand roughly, we said.
25,939 is what we're.
939, okay. So how are you going to make up the difference? Through Schedule 19 adjustment?
There was a $24,000 phone system.
We allocated to the school for our capital project. It's not in the general fund, because it's in the capital funds project, but they can use that towards, that will be part of the allocation that we gave to the schools to count towards net school spending.
So $2,000, we need more.
And that project, that was like that, the capital project that we did for 24,000, that was at the beginning of the fiscal year, right?
Yeah, was that this fiscal year for sixteen, correct.
Okay. And then, I think I'm hearing you say that for FY sixteen, we have roughly 12,000 left from Smith-Vogue, because Smith-Vogue and Norris are in the same bucket. And then we will probably have an adjustment to Schedule 19, because mowing, not so much mowing, but plowing, it's way low.
I don't know what, that will happen. I don't know what's going on with that, so.
But we have that extra $10,000, hopefully, as a cushion to use against it. Because of that 12,000, 2,000 would have to go towards the 26, and there'd be 10,000.
Well, it's two different years, and it's two different buckets of money. There's municipal money, and there's ed money, and then there's FY 15. The 25,839 is independent from.
But that rolled, I believe, from 15 to 16.
Sixteen and seventeen, far as we'll.
So we're dealing with 16 now.
Right. So $2,000 from FY 15 carryover, and then FY 16, we're going to have a, we have a known deficit, or a gap, rather, of 12,000 roughly. And then we'll probably, when all the costs are shaken out for Schedule 19, have an even bigger gap. And we'll know that probably around April.
Those numbers are different than what I was thinking. I thought, we had a $26,000 gap for fiscal 16. 24,000.
The 25,839 is the gap from FY 15. It's independent of FY 16.
It rolled over to 16.
It rolled over to 16, and that became our new net school spending.
Exactly. It was still short, that number, correct?
Correct.
We're short that number, and, which is independent, we're short for FY 16, because we have, we allocated more money to Smith-Vogue than what was needed, because we need to be conservative. If we know 40 kids are going to go and only 36 go, then we have that, that delta. But.
The question is, we're looking at 26,000 total. 15 rolled to 16, and we're looking at what's in 16 now.
Correct.
We're not looking back to 15, because that already deficit rolled into FY 16. So we got that 26,000, $24,000 capital phone piece, where we need $2,000 more to bridge the gap. Is that accurate?
So it's 2,000 from FY 15, and then 2,000 16?
Not from 15. 2,000 we need in 16 to bridge that net school spending gap, right? If we use the phone system.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing. I'm, I'm splitting out 15 and 16 to keep it independent, because it is different. So, because I see that we have a gap from FY 15 that was carried into 16, and we have a known gap for FY 16 as well.
Well, that's that 26,000, known gap for 16.
No, if we don't spend all the Smith-Vogue money, which we need to transfer to the schools.
If we don't spend it all, yes.
If we transfer it to the schools, we're good.
Right.
Right. And which we normally do.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly, because you said it really fast, and I'm literally hard of hearing. I just didn't hear you. So.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. So we've got to wait a little bit to find out what the, what the Highway Department.
Well, that, that, that won't actually be calculated till year end, till June 30th, until the, the Department of Ed puts together their, you know, scheduling.
But we're going to have to have some sort of estimate with the cushion in there.
Yeah, I mean, they, they put it, they use the budgeted numbers at first, and so, you know, that would, that would depend. It's going to be a couple thousand dollars. It's not going to be huge dollars, one way or the other, so.
Well, we just, we walk that line so close. I'm just concerned, John's absolutely right, but we need to estimate it, so otherwise you're going to get another letter.
Yeah.
Because we walk that line.
Yeah, I'd rather have a few extra dollars in the budget, and we say up to or over by point oh 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 oh.
You're right.
Yeah. So, okay. So, anything else on that? Anybody else here? Okay. Vicki, you're still up, I believe. Bussing changes. No, that, maybe that isn't you. Recently, the school department's been able to save funding for the remainder of the fiscal year through cutting a bus from Norris and Hampshire. This has an expected savings of around $10,000 for the remaining part of the fiscal year. Okay, I guess it is, Vicki, huh?
So let me give you a little history here.
Switch papers.
So. I don't know if everyone remembers, but back in May of 2014, for our FY 15, we were presented with a new contract for the buses. If I'm not mistaken, I think it was a five-year contract, three years, and then two years they could renew. And what had happened in previous years, and this came straight from Cindy Landers, who was the business manager at Hampshire and does the bussing contracts. The, the bus company that the school department had underbid their bussing for previous years, because they had lost a couple of other bus contracts between Holyoke, Chickaby, Springfield, those areas, and they needed some more contracts. So they underbid Hampshire. So from, you know, 12, 13, and 14, we were paying way under what we should have been paying. So when we went to do the budget for 15, we didn't know what that number was going to be. So we based it on, well, what, and at that point, we were level funding everything in 15, and actually, a lot of people got furloughed, if you remember that budget correctly. We were kind of in dire straits at that point, because the town, the towns, what they used, as you know, what they used to do is take free cash to try and balance the budget. And at that point, we said, no more, we're not doing that. So we were kind of strapped for cash. So at that point in time, we took the money that they actually spent, which was less than 14, but what they had budgeted in 14, we budgeted out in 15. Then the school department came and said, wait a minute, we're about $50,000 short for the bus with the new contract. So the school department, I believe, took some of their $25,000. Somehow, they made up the difference. for the bus with the new contract." So the school department, I believe, took some of their $25,000. Somehow, they made up the difference with school choice money or some other E and D fund that they had. And then they decided they were going to charge kids $225 to make up the other $25,000 that they were short, which worked out fine. We had like $847 left in '15. So when '16 rolled around, we still had the $25,000 piece of, you know, fees they were going to charge for the bus as additional revenue to the town to put into our general fund. And the town also funded the entire bus contract, the $238,800, can't see today, $238,385. And I confirmed that with Bobby Jones and that was the amount of the contract for this FY '16 year. Now, I can't say that the town wouldn't have given them the entire amount of money if we didn't have that $25,000 as extra, I'll say extra revenue, but revenue to offset those expenses. Because what would have happened was, we would have had to have cut someplace else $25,000 because we didn't have that, you know, that piece of revenue to put into our big puzzle of all the revenues that we had. So now we're stuck with, they decided they were going to look at the routes and eliminate a bus. Now, those kids are still riding the bus. They're still getting a ride to school within the less than two miles and it's up to the school committee to decide if they want to charge that or not. Now, there seems to be some misconception in that all that money just gets dumped into free cash. Now, the free cash calculation really works on your balance sheet. And in previous years, your expenses have exceeded the revenues that you've collected. So it's not as if there's extra money there hanging out that the school's not going to get or the town's going to get extra because it doesn't kind of fall that way. It gets eaten out of your free cash based on the balance sheet piece. So I guess the history would be, I mean, there's going to be money left over in that, but I can't save it for the school. There's no statute that says you can put this into a revolving fund. There is no, you know, laws for Chapter 44 that you can actually do that. And so now we're here with a savings because they, you know, decided to eliminate one bus, so. Does that make any sense history-wise?
So they eliminated the bus route and...
Correct.
Are they looking to re-implement the bus route or...
I'm addressing... I'm not quite sure. I didn't, I didn't get that piece of...
Okay.
I'm addressing...
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jessica McConnell. I reside at 24 High Street here in Southampton. I'd like to discuss an issue that's come up with bus transportation at Norris Elementary. I know the Select Board has no jurisdiction over how the school committee chooses to spend their budget, but I'm appealing to you as representatives of the town's citizenship. Let me explain a little bit about bussing to Norris Elementary, and this is very similar to what Vicki had said. Currently, the bussing contract for all Hampshire regional schools is being fulfilled by Durham School Services. This is the second contract Durham has won for Hampshire regional bussing services. The first three-plus-two-year contract expired in 2014. The contract went out to bid in April of 2014 and again Durham School Services was the lowest bidder. The contract was approximately $50,000 a year higher than the previous contract. However, the town at that time did not increase the budget line item for Norris School Transportation and the Norris School Board found themselves trying to figure out how to raise the additional funds. In 2014, they canceled one bus run. That's how they made up $25,000. Those students were reorganized onto other buses and a bussing fee was added for all students in a two-mile radius of the school. The fee is $225 per student with a maximum of $450 per family. If you live farther than the two miles from the school, the law guarantees bussing. So if you're outside the two miles, bussing is a guarantee, no charge. There are 110 students currently riding the buses who are paying these fees. As of February 1st, 2016, a second bus run was canceled and students were again placed on other buses. No one's lost the right to ride, okay? I would like to note that there are currently eight full-size buses with a legal capacity of 65 students each and a minibus with a legal capacity of 28 students. Legal capacity is very cramped. There are 24 seats on the large buses and they comfortably carry 48 passengers. The minibus comfortably carries another 18. This is a total of 402 passengers without overcrowding. Norris School's elementary population is 489 students, including school choice students. In Southampton, school choice students are allowed to ride the bus. This is one of the few of, we are one of few, if only, town in the area that allows school choice students to use town-provided transportation. Even when bussing was free, there were a large number of families who chose not to use the bus. The remaining nine buses that we currently have bring the total dollar amount of the current contract back in line with the previous contract and the budget the town has set aside for Norris School bussing. I would argue that in the up-and-coming 2016, 2017 school year, there is seating to accommodate all students who are Southampton residents free of charge, including those who currently do not ride the bus because they don't want to pay the fees. There are concerns by parents about overcrowding and ride times. There are solutions to this. As I mentioned, the buses on the edge of town are the ones picking up school choice students and they are also the most crowded. Students close to the school could be picked up by various buses as they make their way into the school, only adding about five minutes of total ride time. Now, as to why I'm here, I was told by Superintendent Craig Jurgensen and the Town Administrator Heather, and I don't want to mutilate your name, how do you pronounce your last name?
Heather usually, everyone knows.
Okay, Heather works. That cutting the buses of February 1st would save $11,000 in the remainder of this school year. This means that not all funds raised by students who pay fees would be necessary to cover the bussing expense. The account the money that the bus fees goes into does not roll over and needs to have a zero balance at the end of the fiscal year. So I asked if the families who pay for bussing would be receiving a discount on this year's fees and I was told no. I was told by Heather that it would be time-consuming to figure out who owed what and this money could be line item transferred to pay for other things. Now, keep in mind that the Town Administrator and the Superintendent have no control over how this money is spent. They can, however, have a strong influence on the school committee, who does make the decision. I paid bussing fees so that my children, out of necessity, not out of luxury, can ride the school bus, allowing my husband and I to arrive at our jobs on time. My husband reports to work at 9:00 AM and as a bus driver, I start at 6:15. If I chose not to pay bussing fees, my children would have to get themselves off to school on their own by walking past Cedarhurst on High Street, which if anyone has driven that section of road knows it's dangerous in a car, let alone on their foot. They would then walk along Route 10 with no sidewalk and then have to cross the top of Palmroy Meadow without a crosswalk. The next two years, my daughter would have to make this trek alone as my son is currently in the sixth grade. We have no family within two hours of us, so I deem paying for the bus as a necessity. However, I agreed to pay for my children to ride the bus, not for the school committee and the town to spend this money on other items. If there is a surplus in this account, that money rightly belongs to me and the other parents who have paid bussing fees this year. We have already paid our taxes and this overage of fees, when it's not necessary, feels like a forced donation on 110 out of 489 students. I'm imploring the Select Board to write a letter to the Norris School Committee on behalf of myself and other families to act on good faith and return overpaid fees. Now, I have to tell you, the second portion of the fees was due February, I'm sorry, was due January 15th. The letter requesting that money did not come out to January 30th and I'm willing to bet with the questions floating around that a large number of people have not paid the second half. So this $11,000 in savings probably doesn't exist anywhere because most people probably have not paid forward the second half of their fees. Everything I've told you, I have here in written copies, if you can see my numbers.
Thank you.
And my information. And I have two extra copies if you want those.
Yeah, I'll give one to Liz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Did anybody else want to say anything on this?
School choice, school choice students do, by the way, pay for bussing. However, we are the only town that even allows them to ride. In East Hampton, two years ago, there was a series of articles in the paper, a woman wanted, who's school choice into East Hampton, wanted to pay for bussing in East Hampton, went to the school committee, it was a big hubbub, and they told her no. So I, the only reason why I bring that up at all is because, like I said, people now think that we have less bussing than we need, which is not true, not even close, and that, you know, the buses that are most crowded, that people complain the most about are the ones who are picking up these students.
A question for you on the bussing. You said comfortable capacity, my words, is like 402.
Comfortable is two students to a seat.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you.
So when you have 48, you've got two to a seat, 24 seats.
So capacity seating, they put three in a seat?
Capacity is 65 because a kindergartner is fairly small and they can sit three to a seat comfortably.
That's how they're doing that number.
But we're talking, we're talking first, second, third grade and, you know, you don't want sixth graders or high school students sitting three to a seat.
I just didn't know the difference between those two.
That's the difference.
There's no standing in the bus, I hope.
And I, you know, my personal opinion, this has nothing to do with the bussing company, my personal opinion is that three to a seat is neither comfortable nor, from a driver perspective, an easy thing to manage. Two to a seat, full bus, that works. You get beyond that, it gets full, but we don't really need to do that. If 402 out of 489 and the number of families who, who bring their kids to school and have since day one is got to be between 50 and 100. I mean, there's, there are a lot of families who'd bring their kids to school and did, even when you didn't have to pay.
I think at our last meeting, we heard about the cars lined up along the side streets, so there's a lot, there's a lot of cars.
Well, that's because, and I can answer to that a little bit. It used to be that when you dropped off your students, you parked along the side, you walked along the front sidewalk and you entered the lobby of the school, which meant twice a day, there were a large number of the public entering the school building. You know, there's no metal detectors, there's no, granted, they're parents, but there's no security checking any of this. So the school decided, well, how can we make this safer? Not to mention the fact that at dismissal time, all those kids would flood that front area and you've got these large buses coming and going, so everybody's using the same entrance. So what they decided to do was to split the traffic. There was discussions about whether the buses would use the back and the cars would use the front, but the back, they weren't sure if the back pavement was rated for a bus. They just, you know, we could have wrecked it, we don't know. So instead, they decided to have parents drop off students at the back and that way they could control the release of the kids. They're going this way, the buses are going that way, and nobody is in the lobby. We're not letting anybody into the building. Understandably, you know, nobody wants to wait 20 minutes to pick up their child, so people started queuing up along Palmroy Meadow, which is not the ideal situation. I can tell you, as a bus driver, do I love approaching a line of cars that may or may not be moving as I'm also trying to enter the same path? No, I don't. Makes me rather uncomfortable. But the school has worked it out. It's definitely safer than what they were doing before and that's where that comes from.
Thanks. Heather, do you have anything to add to the conversation over this?
We have talked numerous times to various people. We actually, as soon as Jessica brought this to my attention, because I wasn't aware of this situation, I think it was last Monday, we had a finance team meeting on Tuesday. We asked Bobby to come, she did. She spoke with myself, Vicki, Donna. I think it was the three of us who were in the room when we asked to stay to go over, you know, apparently, our understanding at the time was Hampshire and Norris had looked at their school bussing needs, they realized they could cut a bus, what have you. I actually brought up, I don't know if Vicki remembers, the, you know, can we reimburse? And the question was, you know, we could, but that gets really rough, you know, how do you do it? It's 110 people. It's not something that would necessarily come directly from the school. It would be Vicki's part-time assistant, Joyce, doing nothing else but doing reimbursement checks for who knows how long. Again, it's, it's not our jurisdiction, it's the school committees. They're the ones, if they wish to set a fee, they're more than legally able to do so, it's within their right. As far as other things, I have been advising numerous times, what the options are, no different than what Vicki said. It's, there's not a revolving account law, so you can't carry the money over. I think it was even an understanding at one point from the school department that you could carry it over and use it next year, you can't. We can't, we can't move the money, it just doesn't work that way. As far as reimbursement, the school department can do whatever they wish on that piece, but they do have to remember, and folks have to remember as well, is it's not that simple. You know, once you start doing reimbursement checks, it has to be, as I understand, Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, but everyone's name, address, and everything has to be entered in manually from the office upstairs, so that gets kind of cumbersome over times. You have parents who have numerous students, so it's, you know, just trying to collate all the information so you're not doing things six, seven, eight times, three, four, what have you, in the same family or neighborhood. But otherwise, I mean, it is what it is. I think Vicki explained well earlier the fact that, you know, we have a revenue line, we have an expense line, and the money's not per se going directly to free cash. And you have to remember, whatever money's there, it's essentially taking a coupon off of the cost of the transportation that we're expending on the other side. Finances are tight, money is tight. If you don't have the 25K next year that you're pulling in, even if you reduce the other side, we don't know where we're going to stand.
And the school committee has been approached and they're, they want to stay the way that...
The school committee at this point, I think I've spoken with almost every single one except for John Fitzpatrick and whom, who else am I missing? I've spoken with Aaron, I've spoken with Sharon, I've spoken with Virginia. Who am I missing?
And Lauren.
Lauren or Lorena?
Lorna.
Oh, Lorna. I have not spoken to Lorna or John, but three out of five of them, Craig, Bobby, Eliza as well today, I've spoken with everyone on the school side, including Kim from IT, who has nothing to do with the school bussing, so we've all been in touch.
So let me propose this to you. Last year, we had budgeted $25,000 to collect in revenue for the bussing fees. We didn't collect at all. So if we don't collect at all, are we going to go back to those parents and say, "Hey, we need more money because we didn't collect at all to offset the money that we spent for the buses that your kids took?" No. So why would we do the opposite? You know, if we don't collect all that money because someone doesn't pay, or if someone decides halfway through the year, they don't want to take the bus anymore, then the town has to find that money to make up that revenue in another line item from something else. So we're all trying to work together to make all of these budgets work and it's not, I don't know, it's just not that simple to separate it out.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we don't ask the building department to just fund itself for all the, for all the fees that they collect. It just supplements what he can spend and if he collects extra, well, then that's something else that someone else can spend. Kind of how it works.
They're looking for a reimbursement on some of the fees because of the excess. Go ahead. Are you on the school committee? Okay.
I just have a question because I honestly need to understand it better because I know I'm going to be, I mean, I've gotten so many calls about this from kids. And I need, I know that we're going to bring it up when we talk about FY '17. I just need to understand, school transportation is a municipal expense. It's outside of net school spending. So I'm wondering why the school committee has the jurisdiction to vote on the fee.
They don't. It's the fee.
I was going to say, it's...
It's just the fee, it's not the money in this line item. It's the fee that it's...
The additional...
The additional fee that we charge.
Yeah, but why wouldn't the Select Board, which is the municipal side, be voting how to offset their expense? Like, it's not a school expense, it's a town expense. So I'm just...
You are correct.
Okay. It's a town expense, but... That's why I was kind of wondering, like, why wouldn't the Select Board, why wouldn't that fall on them? Because it's not about me, it's about them. It's not in my budget.
That's a good question.
So, the school committee set forth a fee that lea, that legally they may not, and I'm not saying that we need to go back and get this money, but you're saying that the school committee may have created a fee situation that actually should've been created by the select board.
In my mind, yes, but I don't know if, if this is what happens in other towns. I know, having worked for a large municipality in Massachusetts, the city pays transportation, 'cause it's a municipal expense, and that's it. And they don't assess fees because, you know, it's cotton dry. But, um, and they have hazard busing, which we don't have here, which you would qualify for, and I would qualify for, ninety-five percent of the students within Southampton qualify for under Department of Transportation, when I had Safe Roots come out and take a look. 'Cause my kids would also have to walk on Route Ten to try to get to school without sidewalks, so.
You gotta use the mic for them to hear you at home.
That you can't hear me?
At home.
Oh, okay, so, that's, that's my question. Like, in, in the future, are they gonna be setting the fee, or are we gonna be setting the fee? Yeah, 'cause I, I'm, I'm not trying to be flip, like, I just really need to understand it, 'cause I'm on the school committee.
It brings up a good question that we need to find out.
And I don't know if we can be assessing these fees, it's not in my budget, it's outside of net school spending, so.
Heather's not here, so I don't know the process.
Right, and she might understand it better. Um, another thing is, and I'm just trying to understand, 'cause, you know, I've worked in municipal finance for a really long time, and, and, you know, I've worked with different financial systems, and I'm just wondering, like, there's no reporting mechanism where we can, like, we have a hundred and ten families, right, that paid? There's no reporting mechanism, or even like a shadow book that would display, like, who's paid to year-to-date?
I would think there's an Excel spreadsheet somewhere that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, even a shadow book, you got a hundred and ten families, we're not talking about thousands of people.
There's gotta be, because if we know that people haven't paid, how do we know that if there's not a, a simple.
Like, we had Munis and.
Yeah.
The school, the school department collects all that money, they keep track of what the bus fees are. They turn the money over to us, and we deposit it, and we put it in. But, if we were to cut those checks, we would have to cut those checks from our system. Our systems are not linked. They could give us a spreadsheet with the addresses, names, and then we'd have to enter each person to cut that check to them.
I think, I think it's doable if we decide to go that way. So, I, I think we can take that part off the table. If, if it's decided to go that way, it's a spreadsheet.
It's a hundred and ten new vendors you've got to enter.
Understood, but.
I'm not saying that you can't do it, it just is time-consuming.
It's a time, understood, so.
I, I understand, I, I agree with you, I mean, having worked in.
And I don't have any money to pay my person extra time. I don't have any overtime money to pay.
It's a doable project.
I don't have the time to just give a hundred dollars.
Well, hold on, hold on, not from, not from the audience there, please, unless you wanna step up there.
I mean, I do, I do understand that it's like really time-consuming, and I'm just wondering, and I, but I, and I'm just wondering, um, and that's another thing, 'cause I'm just trying to figure out, like, Heather, I brought up why the town is not, not accepting the jurisdiction for collecting, like, for, for creating the fee, and then.
Why did the school committee do the fee instead of the board of?
'Cause it's a municipal expense outside net school spending.
We, we didn't create it, I, I don't know, Sharon, we'd have to look up what the law says as pertains to, I believe it says the school district is allowed to charge within the two miles, I don't know if it says the town, but we, we can find out. The other problem with collecting it would be no different than, you know, what do you do when a parent doesn't pay their school lunch fees? Our tax, tax collector's office doesn't go after them and, you know, hunt them down for those fees? That was a question that we did cover last year, 'cause that was the same concern, well, what do we do with bus, busing fees that aren't collected? Can we turn them over to the tax collector? That's the busiest office I have in town right now, and it's swamped.
Because at the end of the day, if there's a delta in transportation, it's not my problem. Like, on the school committee, I'm just, I mean, it, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a school budget item, it's a town budget item. Like, if there's a shortfall, it's your shortfall. And so, I'm just wondering why this, how it fell, I'm just wondering the history and the jurisdiction of how it fell on the school committee, because if I'm gonna vote on this in FY seventeen, when I'm doing my budget and dealing with parents, and I've been flooded with phone calls, and I can't go to Big Y without getting approached, I need to understand it better. And then also, like, that's another thing, when I had to pay the fee, 'cause I pay the fee, I sent my money to the town of Southampton and addressed my check as such. It's weird that it's even passing through the school department, like, it's a town expense.
Well, I think the question that surfaces is, how did it come to be with the school committee, which I'm sure you can look it up and find out with the law? So, let's find out that, put it on the next agenda, and we can decide who has the authority to do that, then we can make a decision if we wanna support it or not.
And, and you know, I feel like this is so important to families, like, this is so important, and I, I mean, like, I've had parents calling me in tears. I have a mi, I have a municipal finance background, I have a graduate degree, I teach this in college, I would be happy to come and volunteer my time if, if that would be helpful to try to figure out how to, like, if we need to reimburse people, 'cause they pay the full amount, or if we don't. I mean, I know it's a big job, I get it, I, I have a really hard time believing that we don't have a financial system that can, like, drop or report, and if, I know that, then maybe we're not using the financial system to its full capacity, and then I'm having a hard time believing that there's no, like, spreadsheet in place, like, or a shadow book, it's a hundred.
The spreadsheet must be with the school, 'cause they collect the money, they write down the names, and they turn the money over to us, and we don't enter it into our.
So, so, let's.
There's a record-keeping, okay, then I would be happy to, like, work with somebody on that, just on my own time, not school, because I know it's really important to families, and $450 is a lot of money for some families, and like Jessica spoke early on, and she said that's half of her heating bill for the mo, for this winter, so, you know, if I can do that, then I'll do it, but, um.
Appreciate it.
And if we can look into the jurisdiction, please do, 'cause I need to be able to understand it better, so I can answer questions, and then you guys too, too, like, if it is falling on your shoulders, and it's really what you're.
It's a matter of going back and finding out how we did it originally and, and bringing it up, and we'll go over it next meeting. But if it's on ours, we'll, we'll make a decision, if it's on the school committee, we can make a recommendation either way. I don't know that we necessarily wanna get into the recommendation now, unless you folks wanna talk on it, but.
Okay.
Is that unreasonable?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Did anybody else wanna say anything on that? Okay, thanks. So, Heather, we're gonna find out?
Working on right now.
John. Our school budget for busing is in the school department.
Right, yeah, I think I know.
That's why they have control over it, that's my understanding.
There's a, but there's a question that comes up that we wanted to find out for sure.
School transportation is one of only two items that are outside of net school spending, it is entirely a municipal expense.
But when the town votes a town meeting, they put that money in the school department's budget.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
They don't?
It's a separate line item, it's outside of net school.
But they've always been in charge of it, have they?
There's never been anything to be in charge of before, 'cause they always fully budgeted it.
They're, you know, no, he's right, they're managing the, like, the implementation component, is what you're saying.
I think it's a valid.
You have the fiscal piece, they have the implementation component, that's what you're saying.
I think it's a valid question, we'll, we'll follow up and clarify it. You got it already? We, we have?
I think we might be there. All right, under Chapter Seventy-One Public Schools, Section Sixty-Eight Duties of Towns to Maintain Schools, Transportation of Children, etc., in the case of transportation provided to students that is not required by this section or by any other general law, a school committee may assess fees to the transported student up to an amount sufficient to cover the costs incurred.
Okay.
So, just to let you know again, it's Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixty-Eight, School Committee.
Right, but we don't have to, and then.
No, you, you absolutely don't have to assess the fee.
But it sounds like they have the ability to do so, which they did. That's how they came up with the budget shortfall, if I remember correctly.
Well, I believe at the time, they did not real.
Gotta get them up at the microphone.
Oh, you gotta come back up?
At the time, and I sat in on a lot of those meetings, I definitely think it was a scramble, and there was not someone on the committee at that time who had a municipal background, so I don't think they realized that they could've come back to the town and said, you know, this is, this is a budget shortfall on the town's behalf, that they, so they assumed the responsibility, I think, without even realizing how or what they were doing.
It's, it's a memory thing, but I'm pretty sure that they looked at various ways to do it, and they came up with that.
I think in other communities, other communities overfund net school spending, and so, they can use that as leverage, like, with this whole fee structure. We fund at net school spending to the dollar, like, we walk that line, and so, at the end of the day, the school committee, based on what I'm understanding, could have the authority to say, no, we're not gonna assess a fee, and if you guys have a delta, it's your delta. So, okay, 'cause, 'cause if you did fund under net school spending, then you could say, okay, we're gonna cut that by $25,000, but you're funding at net school spending. So, good to know.
Now, we know it's the school committee's, uh, duty to make a decision, does anybody wanna discuss whether we agree with, with it, or we wanna make a recommendation, or we just wanna let it lie where it is?
Well, one of the, I mean, you already have at least two school committee members here, so you know they're gonna raise the question at school committee, I hope at least for discussion, but it's, I guess it's up to the board if they wish to write a letter, maybe it doesn't have to say, you know, necessarily refund, but at least to say, please consider all the options possible and plausible, whether it's reducing, refunding, or continuing, just to discuss and have it out there.
Well, I, I think that's a given, they're gonna look at all different ways, it's just a matter of, do we wanna take a, a strong opinion on one way or the other and make that recommendation to the school committee? So, I'm looking for a little input from the other two members.
Well, I, my, um, first of all, thank you so much for bringing this to light, and, my biggest concern is always the safety of children, you know, the community, and, um, I know that you've been told that $11,000, we'd save $11,000, but I'm trying to figure out a way to help you, and, um, that, I think, I'd be more apt to talk to the school department to make sure that the children get to school safely. You know, I mean, that's, to me, is one of the most important things, and if you were promised that this would happen, and now it's not, and you're being cut, I, I find that.
It is, the town is working, I believe the town, the Safe, Safe, um, Safe Routes to School, I believe, is starting their implementation this, this summer, you guys have been talking about that. I can tell you, as a, as a current, the current situation is bad. As I come down Palmroy Meadow, there are kids crossing from the side streets. I'm in a school bus, I cannot turn on the yellows, 'cause I'm not actually picking up a student, so I'll turn on my hazards and stop. Do you know cars coming the other way? Don't stop. They don't notice these kids crossing the streets. So, hopefully, next school year will be better, but it's still a questionable situation, you know, I mean, we're a rural town, and we were never prepared for this to happen. We're working on it, but the current situation is, is not good. You got kids crossing from Palmroy Meadow Extension, across Route Ten, once again, second year in, no sidewalks. The school has tried to get volunteer, um, crossing guards, have had no luck with that. So, it's just, you know, there are, and there are, you know, there's just a lot of questions around this whole issue, and I can, you know, I, uh, we could go around in circles on this, it's just a matter of, you know, what is best for our schoolchildren.
Charlie?
I moved that the Board of Selectmen sends a memo to the school committee.
Get the microphone, they can't hear you, no. I'm getting texts from people. You're getting messages, John, is that what you're telling me? All right, I moved that the Board of Selectmen send a memo to the school committee, asking them to revisit the busing issue, and devise to Board of Selectmen as to how they're proceeding. Okay, that sounds kind of, well, is there a second, first of all?
Second.
Okay, I, I was gonna say, it sounds kind of general.
It's meant to be general, because I'd like to see the school committee sit down, talk to each other, find out what they're doing, and get back to us.
Before they make a decision?
Either way, I mean, the reality is, we need more information from that party, too, we don't have that party here.
So, you're just asking for more information with your motion?
Right.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, three oh? Okay.
I don't think there's anyone here, but John's getting messages.
Not in person. Okay, let's see what else we have here.
I think if you go up right before those two, John, it's Vicky's update on the budget, she'd like to go home.
I'm looking for you here, Vicky, I'm looking for you.
Looking for me, I'm right here.
On the agenda.
I think it's two C.
Hear my voice.
Two C?
Around two C-ish.
Oh, monthly checking with town accountant on budgeting, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, well, as you, uh, have the email from, I think it was Heather, or did Donna send it out, that she's working on receiving, um, the receipts that she got a little behind in, because that office is new person, taxes, water, you know, all that stuff was kinda happening, um, and so, she did post some Decembers, which I will need to, she did receipt some December receipts, and I'll have to post them on Thursday, um, and if she gets any more done tomorrow, I'll try to post those Thursdays and send out new reports through the end of December when she's finished, so you guys have that information. Right now, the auditors are here, um, Melanson and Heath, and they are working upstairs through Thursday, um, trying to get as much information from us as they can while they're here, and then once they leave, I get inundated with emails for a month or so with things that they might need as they go along, and so far, so good. You know, they're really great to work with, because you can ask them whatever question, and they'll give you, you know, an advice on an answer on how to record something, or how to go about something, and so, it's always nice to, um, to have that, you know, opinion from them, um, 'cause there's a lot of stuff I know, and a lot of stuff I don't know, 'cause I haven't come across it before, you know, 'cause, I mean, everything's new and evolving and changing in the town, so, um, uh, so if you go to look at your expense report, I don't know if, um, the most recent one you guys have, if you had any questions on any of the expenses that are gone through here, um.
I mean, in general, it looks like we're doing pretty well in most categories.
It doesn't look, um, as anything is too out of whack right at this moment, um.
Yeah, the ones that are are, you know, the, the maintenance agreements and all that, which we preload and pay for upfront.
Yeah, like police maintenance equipment, you know, that's always, um, you know, contract, service contracts for the buildings, um, software, that type of stuff is definitely in here.
But that's normal.
Yep, um, you know, vocation tuition is a little behind in their billing, so if you look at vocation tuition, you look, there's, you know, $587,000 in there, but it's really not, we've only paid sixty days, I think, through the end of November, 'cause they bill us on a per-day, per-kid basis, um, and, um, I think everything, like I said, is, is, is pretty.
Yeah, overall, we're about fifty, fifty percent, which is good. Anything exciting on the revenue side that we should?
Not until we get those, um, pieces in, um, you know, and obviously, the taxes look like they're way under, but she's just collecting all that money now.
Right.
'Cause we just sent, you know, the bills out for the new commitment and all that, so, um, so, I mean, those are kinda hard to, kinda hard to judge, um, in terms of, you know, what we've collected so far and everything, so.
Any questions for Vicky on this? Thank you, appreciate you coming and staying for a while.
Okay, we're going to skip to six D for MOU, uh, which is a memo of, uh, understanding. Last year, we had a student who wished to attend the program at Westfield Volk instead of Smith, the cost is less, however, we are unable to provide transportation. On signature, on an agreement by Hampshire Regional Board of Selectmen and the student's family, we allowed the student to attend Westfield Volk. Again, this year, we have another student with the same interest, the applications are currently in progress. So, we need a motion to sign the memo of understanding, uh, provided that Hampshire Regional and student's family sign, and that the student is accepted into the program.
John, the family is here, if you have any questions, or if they wanna speak.
Which is the student? I'm kidding, how are you? Absolutely, just identify yourself. What's the, the program that is in Smith, or in Westfield, that, that Smith doesn't have?
He, it's not that there isn't one that, um, Smith vocational doesn't offer, uh, my son is interested in going to Westfield, uh, for a number of different reasons. I currently teach there, and he hears about some of the successes that we've had, uh, in our program, our particular program, which is manufacturing.
So, you teach at the Volk program?
I do, yeah.
That would be the transportation part?
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, transportation's not gonna be an issue, I'm gonna be going there anyways, uh, but we do have a few questions. He is interested in manufacturing, he's keeping an open mind, we, our school currently offers a aviation program that, uh, he's shown a little bit of interest in, along with some other programs, but we do have a couple of questions, um, and, you know, because we're new with this, I, I don't know the answers. Now, why is it that the town doesn't supply, or doesn't re, uh, offer transportation to Westfield over Smith? I understand that there's a, some type of, a co, I've heard contract or an agreement with Smith, when I thought, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, and I'm going back around thirteen years ago or so, kids from Southampton could go to either Smith or Westfield, and there was, and I, I don't know how, who provided it, but there was a small van-type, you know, minivan-type bus that picked three, four, or five kids up in town here and brought them, maybe you guys can answer that better.
This changed a few years ago, but Heather, go ahead.
So, to the best of my understanding, as you probably guess, like any other city or town, what we have set up is that we have one bus that may pick up Hampshire Regional kids in the morning, go pick up Norris, and then vice versa, in the afternoon, so we kinda have a dual route for them. Um, it saves on costs, you know, you're paying for the same bus all day, but you're paying for them at least to do both jobs. A few years ago, I imagine, they had something different, what have you, but at some point in time, it was the decision of the town and the school district to go with Smith as the vocational option, sending their kids to that school. That being the case, if a child wanted to go to a vocational school, the answer was Smith, there you go. Um, and it was set up that they had a, uh, combined program for the transportation, not the same as, you know, the same bus, but there was one way to group them all together and go that direction. Let's say hypothetically that tomorrow, the town decides, you know, starting next year, we're going to go to Westfield only. It's going to be a transitional period where we'd have to bus kids currently still to Smith and to Westfield, which would be very costly initially. At some point in the time in the future, we've already been advised that we're going to have to consider the option of, you know, are we happy? Do we want to stay with Smith as our primary vocational school? Do we want to look at Westfield? People have yeses and nos for both of them. People think Smith vocational is a very strong school. And same time, Westfield's going to offer different programs that Smith doesn't offer. And that's the case. At this point in time, the best we've been able to come up with, remember, this is only the second occurrence in a couple of years now, is we've said, okay, we're okay with sending a child down to Westfield, but the family would have to pick up the transportation and be solely responsible because at this time, we do not have a method to transport. Over time, should we have five, 10, 15 kids going to Westfield? The town may have to look at it and reconsider.
How many kids are currently, like, for instance, this year, from Southampton went to Smith? Do you guys have that number or do you know roughly?
Uh, no.
Vicky just left and we just had the roster. Do you have any idea, Tammy? It's like 40-ish?
It was 40.
Because the, uh...
And it gets, you have to remember, it's not that simple and it also gets calculated out with special education costs and things like that.
Right. The, and I'm sure you guys maybe are aware of it, maybe some people are, some people aren't, but this year, the fee for Smith vocational, you know, is $17,556. The fee for Westfield is $10,106. So it just seemed, you know, for over $7,000 savings in a town that seems, from what I'm hearing here, you know, struggling in some areas with some, you know, financial issues, that if you got a bus, you know, even if it's a small bus of 10 or 15 kids, that, and a lot of kids, I think, probably, they don't even realize it's an option. I've talked to parents that, you know, there was, there was that one instance last year because, because it was a different situation. But I think if it was offered to kids, it would be a huge savings. It could potentially be a huge savings to the town. Now, I realize that savings hasn't always been that much and that changes, but for $7,000 per student, that would add up quite a bit.
So there's a couple of things to take into consideration there, and I don't know the answers to these questions. But if I was looking at this analytically, I would ask them. Number one, I'd want to know what the cost of the special education programs are in Westfield as compared to Smith, because just because the tuition's higher doesn't mean that your special education costs are going to be lower. Number two, I'd want to know how many kids who are going to go there are going to be in the special ed program. The question is, do they analyze all the kids the same or do they have different services? Next question you want to know is because the Smith kids or vocational group is grouped in with the elementary instead of the high school where one would commonly put them, how does that affect our net school spending? Because at some point in time, I'm willing to think it's very likely that the state and their calculation of how much they contribute and how much we contribute goes into the total cost of the tuition at the end pertaining to the vocational school. If that's the case and the majority of our kids are going to a school that's only 10,000 versus 17,000, it may not really save us anything over time because if they adjust the amount they're supplying, change our contributions in proportion to the costs we have total to pay out, it's not going to make much difference. As far as, like, if you say tomorrow, you know, can you pull it off tomorrow? Probably not. The transportation costs would kill us. But over time, if there's, you know, a larger leaning, I mean, we've already had conversations with the school department on the side on this that, you know, at some point in time, we do need to reconsider, do we go to Smith or do we go to Westfield? Because at some point, there does, has to be, has to be a decision over which one we primarily go with.
So the days of doing both, it's not even, you wouldn't consider it then?
Well, I think, you know, we, I think as a group, we consider everything. As a town, we have to, but at the same time, it's financially, how does this work? And the biggest question is, how ultimately will it affect net school spending?
As far as the IEP or the special ed, I know in Westfield, it's another $6,000 on top of that cost, which still puts us a little bit under what Northampton is charging. I'm guessing that Northampton also has an increase for special ed students on top of their price. I don't know what it is, but.
I tried.
I remember.
I don't believe it is. My daughter was in the special ed.
You don't believe it's?
There's an extra charge.
Oh, there is. There is.
So that's something we can check and pass it along to the school committee. But I remember when we had four kids going, I don't know, four or five years ago, we were paying roughly $50,000 for transportation.
What was that number?
About $50,000. So that's, yeah, there's a balancing point where this would make sense.
Absolutely.
But possibly, you know, if it's offered and it's, it's, it's out there and parents know about it and, you know, when all they hear about is Smith, Smith, Smith. And believe me, I'm a graduate of the Smith. We're both graduates, you know, and...
Six tests.
But I, I just think leaving, letting parents and kids make that decision is an important part of their...
No, I agree.
We've also watched programs at Smith deteriorate. And that is also why we are wanting our child to go to Westfield. I mean, their manufacturing program cannot get kids out and co-op. That's one of the biggest reasons why kids choose a trade school. So it's been struggling. So that is why we want him to have a superior education and it is at a lower price.
Our, if I could just jump in here real quick, just a little bit of information. I teach in the manufacturing department. We have, over the last 12 years, we've had 100% placement of all of our students, junior and senior year. So they all go out and co-op. They all get jobs. We currently have five, five classes that we teach that STIC offers kids to roll credits right into STIC when they, if they enroll in engineering programs there. They can take up to 12 credits from the five different classes. So, you know, it's, it's, that's, that's one of the main reasons. You know, my son's showing interest in engineering. There's, there's just, you know, there's, Westfield has now just gotten up to a level one status, which has been huge for us. It's, you know, it's a big accomplishment, so, you know, I think that's, that's the main reason.
Now, Tammy, you're on the school committee. Is there some information you can just bring back and let them be known at the select board meeting? There was a concern in looking, relooking at the cost?
I can do that.
That'd be great, thanks.
Great. Thanks a lot.
So Mason, you're looking forward to this? Driving with your dad every day? All right. That'll change, don't worry.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Good luck, Mason.
I didn't.
So we need to hear a motion? You gotta let me get to it, guys.
Go ahead, get to it.
Do I hear a motion to sign the memorandum of understanding pending the signatures of Lyle, Carrie Washington, and Craig Jurgensen?
So moved.
Second. Any more questions? Okay, so we'll sign off. We'll pass it through the process.
So do we sign now?
If you can. Just following the leader.
Is it Westfield Tech?
Westfield. Tammy, it looks like there's a trend developing here. Okay, it looks like we're back to 4A, PCFs. Let me just see here.
I'll cross your name out.
Did you change the title?
Yeah, you don't want to be Liz?
No, I don't. So we have three PCFs that are being revisited at the request of the fire chief. The last meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to hold off on allowing on-call pay to non-residents in concern of their inability to be available for taking calls. These were the folks, I believe, that lived out, like in South Hadley in that area. Says the fire chief has responded that department members can only sign up for a night shift if they live within five miles of the station. However, some folks who live outside of the five miles may choose to stay with family here in town when they're on the, signed up for the night shift. So we have those three PCFs that came back to us. Somebody like to make a motion to accept these? I move. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss these more? They're from the last meeting? Okay, all in favor of accepting them? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nobody oppose? Heather, all three of us?
I get a vote?
This could be exciting.
Three of us.
We agree.
Okay, 4B ballot question. At the special town meeting, we believe that we could place the Prop 2.5 override question for the second shift EMS service on the next election, which is the presidential primary on March 1st. Unfortunately, we missed a deadline to sign a warrant for a ballot question to that effect, which would have had to be signed 35 days prior to March 1st, which is the night of the special town meeting. So we have the following options. One, place the ballot question on the annual town election. There's no additional cost, but would require that if the question passes, for us to place the question back on the annual town meeting May 17th. Prop 2.5 question must pass both the town meeting and election in a 90-day window. So no specific order is required. Two, hold a special election for the ballot question that'll cost approximately $3,000. Or three, pass over the item and make no further action. Anybody want to weigh in on this before I do?
Well, I'm not interested in this special town election. I don't want to spend any more money.
Right, no.
Agreed. Is that Jackie?
Yeah, I think number one.
And, and I think after going to the town meeting and hearing this on the floor, there's a lot of passion for it, so I wouldn't be in favor of passing over the item.
Right. So definitely number, number one. Place the ballot question on the annual town election.
So would you like to make that motion?
Yes. I move the place the ballot question in the annual town, annual town election.
Okay, and everything that follows there?
Yes. I don't know if you want me to read it, but...
Charlie?
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, I agree with that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heather, 3, 3 oh on that? We're going with option one? Okay, five. Where's Charlie?
He's right next to you.
Oh, this Charlie. Charlie one?
Yes, Charlie one.
Charlie, can you update the board on the status of capital projects and building maintenance required at Norris?
All right. The capital committee does not have anywhere near the money it had last year. What appears to be developing is three priorities. Funding of a new police cruiser, funding turnout gear for the fire department, and funding the school department in relationship to laptops and PowerPoint projectors. That's probably going to, I think Kim wants to talk to, but I think that's going to be about the extent of it. Remember, the capital committee has not formally voted on this stuff. This is just in discussion at this point.
What was the second item?
Turnout gear.
Turnout gear.
We discussed turnout gear and broke it over three years for the fire department.
About $9,000?
Oh, boy, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it's 18.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, okay.
And so the point was, is every year, give them some so they can buy new equipment and keep getting up to date as they go along. Rather than one year and then every several years, we're going to have to have a big chunk of money to do it again. So, but Kim's here from IT from the school department, if you want to...
Hi, Kim. You want to come up to the podium?
So you're Kim?
Kim Florrick, Director of IT for Hampshire Regional. And I just wanted, I just wanted to give you maybe a little bit more information and update about sort of what we've been doing in the process. As Charlie has says, we've, we've recognized some, some needs at the school. About two weeks ago, we actually did have a walkthrough. It was Eliza Pluta, Dr. Jurgensen, Margaret Larson, and Bill Colita and myself. We walked through the building because we realized that the capital plan that we had out there, there was, there were still some maybe updates to that that we needed to do. So we took a look at what was on the capital plan and we actually are in the process of firming up, you know, exact costs and pricing with vendors. You know, some of the things that were on the capital plan had been on the capital plan for several years, so this is a need to sort of review and update pricing. The, you know, there are things on the capital plan that represent security concerns with our key swipe card system for the doors. Our Wi-Fi is in desperate need of being updated. The sidewalks, I know we're working with Bill Colita and he's supposed to be reaching out to the highway department to look at the sidewalks. Some skylight repairs. As Charlie mentioned, classroom projectors and laptops for technology that are pretty old. So those are some of the things that we've been looking at and prioritizing. But I think out of all of those discussions, it seems like our top two priorities are the security for the doors, that security system for the doors, as well as the Wi-Fi. The Wi-Fi situation, though, I have reached out, the school department has reached out to some funding sources. So although it is on the capital plan and I've been, I've, I've shared this with, with Margaret when we had our walkthrough, that I had reached out to two funding sources, a federal funding source and a state funding source, to see if we could get funding for our Wi-Fi. So I, that, it's a grant, it's a matching grant. So we can take federal funds and match it with state funds. And we should have a word on that. And I put it, we put it in for Wi-Fi infrastructure for the Norris School. If I, it looks like we may get funding, but I won't have official word for that for approximately one to two weeks. And then even when I do, I'm not sure what that amount's going to be.
And that's fine because the capital committee is not meeting for another month because it's, it's early. We're trying to make sure there's some funding for the schools. We set the laptops and the PowerPoint based on what we have for data. But if you bring more information, that'll change as it evolves.
Okay.
The sad part is, there isn't a lot of money there to pull from.
Did you say this was for Norris or Hampshire Regional or combination?
This is for the Norris School.
Okay.
I mean, there's also discussions going on with the cable company about accessing them with cable. And I'm working on that. I think I sent you an email showing you some of that that's going on.
Yeah, so we had...
That's still in its early infancies, too.
Yeah. So the, so the Wi-Fi would be for the internal connections, but the actual, you know, cable contract could greatly help out the Norris School by providing the bandwidth outside of the building, out to the internet. One of the things that's really, that I'd like to mention when we look at some of the technology, you know, in FY '19, you know, the move for the, for the state and for, and testing is moving to online testing. If we were to do that today at the Norris School, we would not be able to do that because of the Wi-Fi. We are at minimum specifications right now with our student laptops. So you'll see in more figures that I'll be sharing a replacement plan. I've actually got a 10-year replacement plan in place for technology. And there's going to be a heavy investment in some of those laptops that we're going to need for student testing, you know, as we approach that FY '19.
I've heard in the past, and, you know, you go to the Dells of the world, the Apples and the HPs, that they donate equipment to the school. Is there any of that funding or grants out there? Or have we contacted any of the manufacturers?
Well, I haven't contacted the manufacturers just yet, although I think for some, some Wi-Fi stuff, I've, I've actually seen some things and reached out. However, and that's what led me to this, thinking about the grant opportunity as well for Wi-Fi. But Smith College in Northampton has formed a relationship with the larger district, including, you know, all of the elementary schools and the regional high school. And when they have equipment, they're on a pretty tight rotation schedule. They're, they, from, you know, their engineering departments to their, you know, their theater departments. When they have surplus equipment, I am on the list for them to call so we can actually get some of their surplus equipment.
And you're talking about laptops and all that?
Yeah, laptops and different items.
I'll give you my information later, but where I am, we donate a lot of equipment out of our IT department because we turn it over quickly because of technology, so.
That's great.
Send me an email or get it from Heather and I'll look into it for her.
Right, great. Thank you, John.
Okay, thanks.
Kim, the cable contracts relative to internet access? It's going to be a dead end. I can see that coming with the legal stuff. If it's, if it's video, yeah. But if it's internet access?
There's a lot of streaming video going on, on the internet.
I know.
For instructional sources that, where are, we've, you know, we're moving towards a lot of online resources and for textbooks and instructional material that incorporate video. I don't know if that, I'd be happy to talk to someone, yeah.
The problem is, is my understanding is, is this has been challenged in court before with cable companies. And they're saying, well, no, if you read the license that was put together with the FCC, it deals with video, not...
If, um...
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, I know. And we talked about the, maybe the television, the station to be, to have some, some equipment.
That's the idea.
Yeah. We'd use the internet to hopefully broadcast over that.
So you could broadcast activities at the school and that kind of stuff? Maybe even some sporting events outside?
So maybe that's where some of the video as well. I don't know.
Eagle fishing, you see what you catch, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Kim?
Yeah, I have a question. Are you alluding to the skylights that are right as you come into Norris? Well, you know, they're up on the top there. If you look behind you.
Yes, from my understanding, when we did the walkthrough of the building, it's, it's when you walk into the main entrance of the building. There's an issue there with leaking and...
How bad is it? I mean, is it?
I, I mean, I, when I walked through the building, I wasn't sort of aware of it before, when it was happening, so I didn't actually see it when things were wet. But, I mean, I, I can, I know when I looked up, I could actually see some watermarks. But I don't, I, again, I'm, I'm not a, I don't really know what that means.
If you get wet, you know it leaks, right?
Yes.
Charlie, have you seen it?
No, but Mr. Colita has.
How bad is it?
He's got to get up to the microphone. He can't sit back there like that.
Yes, I can.
No, you can't. Nobody's going to hear you, Bill.
Everyone can hear you.
We know you know where it is, Bill. Come on.
Bill sees all the leaks in his school.
What do you need to know?
Your name and your address for it?
Uh, Bill Colita, Gilbert Road.
Thanks.
I did take a walkthrough at the school. We just needed some updated information, like Charlie was saying. As you entered the school, right where the bell tower is, that entrance, it seems, may not be the skylights. It may be a roof issue where that building connects to the main building. If you look up... to the main building. If you look up, like it has wood beams up there, you can see they're all water damaged. They're all, you can definitely tell water's getting in there. There are water marks right down the side, and I, I'm trying to think if there was an electrical connector there, not a switch or something, that the water mark went right down through it. It's something that needs to be done. If you don't do it in a few years, it's just gonna keep getting worse.
Has Randall looked at this? Do you know, Charlie?
Why would Randall look at this?
Just from a building point of view, he's, he's fairly knowledgeable.
He's highway department.
That's not a highway. That's a roof.
Yeah, but if he's got the talent, he can look at it and kind of give us an idea of what it is.
The one question that should be asked, they just put a new roof on that?
Yeah.
Is whether or not that area was even checked.
Right.
Yeah.
And if it was, call them back and say, "It's leaking."
Who was in charge of the roofing project?
That was my next question.
No, but who was?
We've already had a lot of issues with that. I don't remember who the overseeing contractor was, but the gentleman over at Norris, who are in charge of maintenance, have become on a first-name basis, because we've been calling, I, actually, knock on wood, probably for about the past six or seven months, we've been good. Before that, myself and Randall have been over there numerous times. Building Commissioner's been over there numerous times. The initial concern was right in the front, when you walk in by the entrance by the office, but they believe that had, that had nothing to do with it. They thought it was a pre-existing issue. They flooded the roof last year, last summer. Remember they did that, Kim?
I do remember something like that, but I don't have the time.
To see and test for, for leaks. One of the other concerns they had last year had to do with the gutters going around the building, and the fact that apparently they weren't the right shape, so it was causing a lot of ice dams and other issues. So I, they have been responsive when we've called. Sometimes it's been calling numerous people, but so far, knock on wood, I don't believe there've been issues directly related to their installation.
So who is following up on this?
Well, the janitors are there on a daily basis, so I imagine they're keeping an eye.
Um, Mrs. Pluta is following up on it. Uh, Mrs. Pluta, the school principal, she's, she's probably...
Okay, so we have somebody watching this, not just the janitors when it drop, when it rains?
Yeah, so, yeah, so with the, so Mrs. Pluta's been, I haven't, she's been watching.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
So she'll, she'll come to us if there's issue. Okay, thanks, Bill. I just don't wanna see this go on, and we all of a sudden have a bigger issue down the road. Okay, now we're on to 5B. Jackie liked to discuss concerns of unsafe conditions in the parking lot and the potential for science to be placed to warn of the conditions.
Okay, okay. Well, basically, I took one for the team. I was in the parking lot talking to Randall. I came in to sign a warrant, oh, maybe two weeks ago, and had, we had an ice storm. We're in the process of having an ice storm. And I was, I had parked on the second level. I went into the senior center side, and I also walked the, the sidewalk, but when I came out to get into my car, I fell, because there was ice in the parking lot. And so my question is, what are our policies, and I should know this, but when do we need to, when does a parking lot need to be salted, the walkways and also the parking lot, prior to employ, town employees and any seniors coming into that, because I don't want anybody else to fall down?
That's definitely a Randall question. Has anybody spoken to him on that?
Jackie, didn't you speak with Randall that same day you called me?
What is, what was his procedure?
Well, he was saying that, you know, it depends on how busy they are, and that they try to get here as early as they can. But the storm, if it continues to sleet or rain, they try to come back and clear it up when they can. And I must've gotten just unlucky that day. But still, I'm just wondering, like, what, what can we do? Can we put a sign up? Can we put some warnings? I mean, what can we do to help people?
What would the sign say?
Warning, I don't know. I mean, that's what I'd want to talk about, investigate, like, how we can just, you know, give somebody a, a warning that there might be ice, or we have to do something.
I'm gonna think that's gonna be more of a common sense with the ice and when the people are coming.
Tammy Willen is 298 College Highway.
Would you like to speak, Tammy? Yes.
Somebody here in Town Hall can't go out and spray some ice out, or the, the ice melt out?
I was gonna say, at a minimum, at least call over to the highway department and say, "Come on over and do it."
But before we open, Tammy, I always check, especially if it's a stormy day, I always check with the highway superintendent and also the police dispatch when I have to make the call of whether or not we're gonna open Town Hall or not. And as long as they advise that all the roads are cleared and safe, and that they've plowed Town Hall, and Paul, our janitor, is usually here in the first thing in the morning. He does a run-through usually here first before any of the other places. He shovels, and then he sands and salts. You can't always catch up in between things, and, you know, most times, you know, if it's snowing out, you know wherever you're going, despite the fact they might sand and salt, it's still gonna be slippery.
So there is a janitor here that could be doing...
Certain hours.
He, yes, he generally visits the Town Hall. It's one of his first responsibilities whenever it's inclement weather.
Yeah. And again, it's, a lot of it's timing. I mean...
We, we do have a bucket of salt and sand, and most of the folks who work for the town in this building, if they notice something's getting salty or sand, or, you know, slippery, they'll, yeah, you're like, "That's salty or sandy." They'll throw ice. I see. We, we had a problem. We actually had to relocate where our sand and salt is kept, because at one point, someone swiped it. So we no longer keep it in plain sight, but we do try to keep it nearby.
Plus, with the fire department being so close, I'm sure Randall's folks come here on a regular basis, so I would think somebody from the Town Hall can call if there was an issue.
Sharon Wojcik, Nine Riverdale Road. I just have a question as a constituent. I think that Jackie's bringing up a really good point. Like, I'm just thinking, it, for a liability standpoint, because I'm not a lawyer, if you do put up a sign, like caution or something, I, I really don't know, does it resolve you of some liability? Like, if we do have somebody that falls, I mean, they, on our property, they can sue us, so...
Okay, will you put a sign that says caution, snowing?
I, I, I don't know, but I'm just saying, is that something to consider? Kind of like, they put stupid things on plastic bags, not to put them over your head. I mean, that's common sense, but they have to do it, because if a child does it and then he dies, then the plastic bag company gets sued. So I'm just wondering, does that resolve us of liability if somebody does fall? I, I don't, I don't know the answer, but I just, I know from working in government for way too long, that those kinds of lawsuits cost a lot of money. So I'm just wondering, you know, is that something we can do?
So you have to be careful when you put a sign up, because if you put a sign up today, that's slippery, and you don't put the sign up tomorrow, and Bill comes to visit Town Hall, and he falls down, he said, "Hey, you had the sign up yesterday. How was I supposed to know it was slippery today? Sign's not up!" So you, you run into the problem that you actually open yourself up to more liability when you're starting to claim, you know, it's no different than nowadays, you can't go anywhere without the caution sign on the floor, because if they don't have it, someone's not gonna realize that the puddle's slippery. So they have to put it up all the time, and that's what you're gonna open yourself up to. The one time someone forgets, we're gonna get sued up the yin yang, because someone forgot to put the "it's slippery" sign.
I think Jackie's point is valid in that.
Yeah, just...
We've gotta be careful. We've gotta sand, we've gotta salt and keep it, so people come in or feel safe about it. Just what frequency, and that's something, you know, maybe you can just bring it up again with Randall.
Maybe you just, maybe you put up a permanent sign from like November 1st to April 1st. I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, in, in, in good faith, we should put something up to warn seniors and, you know, citizens and employees. But also, why can't we check to see what other towns are doing? I mean, I think we should do something.
May I suggest, you had a very good idea a while back about putting a sign up over by the gazebo to direct people to the back entrance of this building?
That's the other one.
I would be more focused on doing that than trying to put up a sign saying, "Listen, it's snowing out. The ground's probably slippery." I don't see that getting us anywhere. But the sign over by the gazebo directing people to the proper door of the building has merit, in my mind.
So where, where were you, Jackie? In the back?
I was in the back, in the second parking lot, in, with the seniors park. I mean, it was a, a lot of ice, you know, and I'm just concerned. I mean, I wanna do something to help.
Actually, you can have a worker's cop playing on top of another one, don't they play? Do you know what I mean? Like, you don't know the answer, but I think it feels like we need to maybe...
Yeah. I, I think it's worth talking, Heather talking to Randall, and maybe Charlie since you're the liaison.
You want me to talk sign to Randall now?
I think we've already...
The, the thought of it, I don't, I don't think we just wanna brush it off. I think it's worth having the conversation.
You have the charge of sanding law.
That's what I'm gonna be doing in the morning. I can see it.
It started at 4:30, Charlie, 4:30.
I started plowing four this morning.
That doesn't surprise me.
Any, anything, any more on this, or?
No, but I would, I would actually make a motion that we instruct Heather to establish a sign over by the gazebo directing people to the proper door of this building, to be installed in the spring when weather permits.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heather, did you catch that?
We're still writing it, but yes.
I, I just got an update on my cellphone of who the projected winners were in New Hampshire, but I'm not telling.
Thanks, John.
We were really concerned about that.
Do you wanna know?
No.
Okay. Hey, I get a lot of texts about different things, I guess, but, okay, now we're on 5C, which is town car use by the building department. Says, "We have a police vehicle that is off the road from police business. There has been discussion about putting this police vehicle in a pilot program as a town car, beginning with the sole use of the building inspector for inspections." We need to have some discussion on this and decide how we wanna proceed. Heather, do you have any background?
So, yeah, we, we've been talking about this for quite a while. It actually came up at the annual town meeting last year. Resident had questioned why we do not use any of our old police vehicles for town car use, instead of putting them in the junkyard. There's lots of pros and cons to this. Other towns, some towns like it, some towns find it, it costs more money than anything else between maintaining the vehicle and putting gas in the car. Is this a feasible thing? Does this work? I, I don't know, but I figure, you know, sometimes anything's worth a try, and if it doesn't really cost much to try, why not give it a shot? We have a vehicle at our disposal at this point in time. Some point, it would be great if we could have a car vehicle. So if you're going out of town on travel, instead of having to assess the town mileage for it, you take the town vehicle with you to go to the conference, what have you. Or maybe you have the assessor's office, who's going to assess property down on the other side of town, they take the car. Some of the, some of the cons with this is, we have different terrain in Southampton. We're not all just flat. We have hills, we have dirt roads. In the wintertime, sometimes a regular car doesn't really cut it. You really need a four-wheel drive vehicle, an SUV. So that's one of the problems we run into. The other issue is, you know, you're gonna have the occasion still where you have folks like the building commissioner, who has to go straight to a fire from home. He's not gonna stop and pick up the town car first en route. That being said, is it worth a try? I think it is. Now, ultimately, at the end of the day, is it always going to be the building commissioner's sole vehicle? Probably not. Maybe he doesn't use it at all, but, you know, right now, if we figure we're paying $2,400, give or take, on monthly reimbursement for mileage, you know, you're looking, okay, well, what would we pay for just...
Twenty-four hundred dollars a month?
Yes. I'm almost positive. I'll double check. It could be less than that, but I thought it was 2,400. Maybe it's 240, and I'm hallucinating with the zero.
I thought we're giving, we're giving them 200 or 240 a month.
It's probably 240 then. I'm just, I'm just losing my mind.
Otherwise, it became a good return on investment right there.
Yeah. Very quickly sold, huh? Sorry about that. So whatever it is, but the idea is, you know, so we would put gas in it on the town piece, and any maintenance we would need to do. And I would like to do it for a trial period of about a month. I talked to the building commissioner, and he, like I said, had concerns. Apparently, other communities, as he's talked to them, generally, those who do have a town car for the building commissioner's use, they still give the same reimbursement, mileage reimbursement to the individuals when doing that. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I don't know. I think it would have to be something that the board and him would have to agree to on the mileage reimbursement thing. I don't know if Charlie has any other thoughts on this, but we've spent a lot of time with this discussion.
I think what we need to do is establish a policy before we launch this thing. And we also need to establish where this car is gonna be located. My thought is over by the police station, only because it's got 24/7 coverage there.
Well, we have cars staying overnight here from other building inspectors, so, or in the fire station. And I don't know who remembers this, but about three, four years ago, we had this discussion, because the assessor's office wanted to use a car, building department wanted to use a car, health inspector, I think, wanted to use a car. And one of the issues that we had is, I think you brought up, a lot of times, these folks come from home, so they go right to where they, they need to go, rather than come here, pick it up and go. So we brought this up about three, four years ago, and it, it died, because people didn't have an interest in coming here to get the vehicle and go home, and we didn't want them to take it home overnight. But I mean, we need a policy and a procedure, and if we're gonna do it, maybe we can share it amongst department with a sign out, saying, "The assessor needs to take it this day, it's signed out," or the building inspector.
Well, what we, what we were talking about was piling it with the building inspector, seeing how it goes, and see what the other departments in town give us for feedback for use or need. And, and maybe it's gonna end up being a shared vehicle. But in that case, then the policy's gonna have to have somebody in Town Hall that designates who gets to use the vehicle.
Yeah.
And it could very well be that it's set up for short-term, short driving versus long driving. In other words, if you're going out of town, you have a priority to use the vehicle.
I'm gonna guess, if we're using an old police cruiser that we took off the road, it's not a long-term vehicle.
Yeah, and that's the only thing we have to look at. How much is the maintenance gonna cost? I mean, you know, for this thing to keep going.
Well, we got a ton of spare parts behind the highway garage.
And another thing we gotta watch out for is setting up a precedent, because if we give it to one department, and the other has a valid need, that department's gonna be here, too.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, we pilot the program with one department. One of the other things, too, that I think this would allow us to learn is, hypothetically speaking, say we find out we're saving a ton on mileage. Maybe over time in the future, it's worth investing in just a town vehicle for employees to utilize. Maybe it's not a used police car, but instead it's a smaller SUV, so they can get to the terrain they need to get to. But if it saves money from the mileage piece, and because we get a discount when we pay gas, and by having our own mechanics maintain it, it would help quite a bit.
And I think the part...
Potentially. Or maybe it'll cost us a fortune. Who knows?
Yeah. I mean, a pilot's good. The part that we're not looking at, which, as an individual, they're using their own vehicles for business, which puts on mileage and gets bumped around, and so it's, it's an advantage. I'm okay with a pilot, as long as we have a policy and procedure for that pilot. Does anybody wanna make a motion for the pilot?
We move forward on a pilot program relative to a town vehicle, and put Heather in charge of developing this.
Okay. Can we, can we report back to the board?
Yes.
Okay. You have a second on that?
Second.
Heather, I'm right there with you.
Okay. Did you get that?
All right, give us one second. Motion to move forward on Heather pioneering pilot program.
Piloting.
Town vehicle. Does that sound about what you said, Charlie?
With a policy and procedure, and reporting back to us with it?
With policy and procedure.
Yeah. And pilot in, in just the building department, correct?
At this point, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three oh, Heather? Three zero. Okay, removal of the tree in front of Town Hall. The tree in front of Town Hall has died. Moment of silence for that? The tree warden and the highway superintendent are both on the same page. Any objections to taking it down?
It's that tree right out front on the right-hand corner.
It's, I mean, if the tree warden says it's truly dead and it's not salvageable, I don't know what options we have.
Is this a sugar maple, or is this a birch?
Not an arborist, I'm so sorry.
That be as it may. The tree's dead.
I moved it the, we authorized the removal, the disposal of the tree by the tree warden.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Question, Heather, is, before we vote on it, what happens to all that wood?
Well, I believe our highway department's gonna take it down, so they're probably gonna do whatever they can with using. Have you seen most of our highway vehicles? We find ways to salvage these vehicles. Or license plates, duct tape.
No, I'm just saying, does the wood go to individuals where, if we sold, I don't know.
I, I will check with Randall if we can dispose of the wood, or if it's something that they're likely going to utilize in some fashion. I, I don't know.
We got a steam, we got a steam-operated truck now?
I just wanna make sure there's no, no ethics...
I want to know who burrs with in the highway department.
I just wanna make sure there's no ethics violations with giving away property. That's all, if you can follow up on that. All in favor of removal? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Three zero. It's a tough group tonight.
Yeah.
I didn't tell you, man, I didn't know trees were such an issue.
It looks like we have some appointments. Karen Adamski to the Greenway Committee and Chap Delane as an election worker and Jody Corey as an election worker. Do we have any paperwork on that Heather, other than this?
Yeah, it's in here.
You do, you do have copies in your packet, so there's an application to serve on a Town Board or Committee from Karen.
Yep.
And for the other two individuals, Janine, the Town Clerk, has sent an email asking that these folks be appointed.
I saw the applications, but there's nothing we have to sign, we just vote on?
Nope, just vote.
Okay. So does anybody have any issues with these three appointments?
No.
I have to abstain from the Greenway.
Okay. Do we hear a motion for Karen Adamski, Greenway Committee, to go separately?
So moved.
And I'll second it out of need. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. So two oh and one. Recommendation for Ann Chap Delane, election worker.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jody Corey, do we have a motion for election worker?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So personnel, we have some PCFs, personal change forms. Paige Dolinsky, resignation as a substitute librarian. As I remember it, she has additional hours in her full-time job and can't do this position anymore, so she has resigned.
Do we send a letter, thank you?
We don't.
Library does.
Yeah, Library takes care of that. Do I have a motion, we accept the resignation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two, Shannon Cutler, Administrative Assistant to the Principal Assessor. We have a change of pay on an hour. She's returning to her original hired job description and salary range. She stepped up to a temporary position. So, her position will go from the temporary 20 hours at 35 hours a week right now back to the $15 an hour at 25 hours per week. Have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Michael O'Connell, Principal Assessor. He's a permanent Principal Assessor that replaced Lori Stewart who departed in June 2015. Okay, $22 an hour for 31 hours per week. Do we have a motion on accepting the PCF?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, Michael O'Connell, Principal Assessor for an emergency. Do we have that paperwork for the emergency PCF?
You, you should have both of them back to back, John.
Oh, back to back, okay. So this was prior to him being full-time.
So what happened was, one of the things we advise folks is when they have to hire someone, 'cause if you remember at that point, there was no one in the office, we had someone temporarily for, I think it was like 10 hours a week or eight hours a week, whatever it may have been, that person was leaving and Mike was coming on. If Mike didn't start as an emergency employee, there would be a two-week vacancy of any coverage in the Board of Assessors Office. Not a great thing to do during tax season. So what we've been advising folks is, in the event to prevent stoppage of the office business, is you file simultaneously the emergency PCF and the regular PCF at the same time. So you're covered for the first two weeks and then the regular PCF gets signed at the same time, hopefully within the two-week window and you're good to roll.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to accept the emergency PCF?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a PR, a personal requisition form for a full-time police officer. It's been signed up by the PQB and the Finance Committee and by the Department, Department Head, Chief Coyet, and it does have the job description attached. So this is replacing retired Police Chief Sylvanale's slide as positions within the department have moved up. Uh, I guess my question here is, since we haven't finalized the police chief, assuming everything goes well, that's fine, but what happens if it doesn't? What happens to this position if we've hired somebody and then people?
Well, this right here is just the PRF, so this is the ability to post.
No, granted.
So say they posted and they get like 12 applicants or whatever, when the PCF comes through, if you guys haven't, you know, the contract hasn't been signed with the chief or you have any other concerns or anything like that, or budget or what have you, I mean, you guys can decide, hey, we're not gonna move forward with the PCF, but at least you have the PRF to post at the time being.
Okay, that's fair, as long as it gives us an opportunity. So, do we have a motion to accept the PRF?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Licenses permits. Application from Pizza 99 Company who's currently doing business as Pizza 99 Company, Inc., 16J College Highway. They wanna change their DBA to Johnny Demon, if that's how we pronounce it. Says, "The owner has submitted a change for his DBA. As this is alcohol-related, the Board of Selectmen has licensing authority, have the jurisdiction over approval, and then a form submitted to the ABCC for their records with no further action required. We're awaiting a document recording the vote of the corporate board. Otherwise, all documents and fees are in place." So do we have that corporate board document?
No, we're waiting on the grant.
Okay, so, they're, they just, it's, the corporation's the same corporation, they just wanna change your DBA.
Yes. So this is, this is probably one of the first of those forms that you folks will see. I don't think we've done many license commission changes over the past couple of years related to alcohol. So that's a Form 43. What it is, is the official form to change anything with the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission in Boston, the ABCC. The DBA change, which seems minute and silly and most people are like, "I don't understand, I'm just, I'm just changing my name 'cause, you know, this isn't working for me anymore." It doesn't work that way. Whenever you have an alcohol license involved in Massachusetts, you actually have to have approval of the local licensing board to change your business name, your DBA. The nice thing is, it's a pretty smooth process upon approval of the local licensing authority. It's one of the quickest things. You guys approve it, it goes into effect immediately, we issue a new license, and at the same time, we send the Form 43 down to the ABCC. They stamp it and say, "Thank you, we'll put this in our file." They do not have to approve it, we issue the license on the spot. Most of the license applications you're gonna see coming through here in the future are not that simple. We have one that will be coming through that we're skipping over tonight 'cause we're not finished the paperwork, is for a change of manager and then eventually an alteration of premises for the Birch, Black Birch Vineyard. I'm creating their own name for them. I, I'll do their paperwork for them if they need on that piece. But essentially, that one's a lot more challenging, has a lot more pieces to it when you get to the alteration part. If they decide to move that way, you have to do advertisement in the newspaper, hearing and everything else. But essentially, this is a very quick, clear piece. When the board does go to sign this, please make sure you sign on the local licensing authority side. I don't remember which side it is, I think it's on the left. Do not sign under the ABCC side or we'll have to print a new form. Thank you.
So this is just basically gonna try and change the sign on the building, right? Type of deal?
Yes, yes. They've already changed their name, they're now catching up. They've also changed their business certificate, certificate with the Town Clerk. So the only thing we're waiting on, as you said before, John, is the vote of the corporate board. And that's just a formality that's required whenever you have a corporation and you're doing work with the Licensing Commission and the ABCC.
So the new manager is John Diamakakis?
Same manager. The only thing that's changing is the DBA.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this?
I move to accept it.
Second? Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You wanna start on left-hand side?
Mm-hmm.
Is it two copies or one?
One.